Can I have your roll call please?
Mr. Chair. Mr. Brody. Mr. Brody.
Here.
Dr. Di Benedetto.
He's absent tonight. He will be back next time. I assume we need him next time. There is an extra.
Mr. Defilia.
Here.
Mr. Duffy.
Here.
Chairman Good.
He's absent tonight and he is also DQ'd.
Ms. Close.
Here.
Mr. Levy.
He is also DQ'd.
Mr. Siena.
Here.
Mr. Weinstein.
He's a gentleman who will be here any second now. And for the record, as our applicant does, to the extent that we'll start testimony, Mr. Weinstein, you can just listen to the tape. A real transcript is available. There is one, so I will be able to do it when it's fine or whenever this comes up there. Thank you.
Mr. Verilli.
Here.
Good.
Okay. Let's have a salute to the flag, please.
Doctor, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada's 100,000 individuals in the living justice for all.
The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and Coaster and filed in the office of the township clerk on July 25, 2018. We have no smoking policy here. There's also emergency exits, as you can see, at the back of the auditorium. Since this is a special meeting, we could go untalked. So, all meetings will be video and audio taped and shown on the Township Promotions Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS, and Channel 77 on Cablevision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please make your call outside of your auditorium. So, the first case. And the only case. Is Deal Land, Deal 35 Land LLC.
Good evening, members of the board. Again, Jennifer Crimko from Ann-Selberman Aaron. Here on behalf of the applicant. One clarification I want to make from the last meeting before we get started again with Jeremy Lang, who was sworn at the last meeting and remains under oath. When we had introduced the historic aerial, A29, it was indicated that it was from 1980. It was not. It was from 1970. So, I just want to make that clarification. It was already referred to and it was just with the wrong date. It was 1970. So, with that, as the board may remember, Jeremy Lang, the project engineer, had almost concluded going through his PowerPoint presentation, which the board members all had a copy of and which we provided to the public as well. Where we left off was he was starting to discuss the various variances that we are seeking as part of this application and providing the planning testimony and support of them. So, I will turn this back over to Jeremy and ask the board and the members of the public to reference the screen where the PowerPoint is being displayed.
So, good evening again. Jeremy Lang from Maeser Consulting. So, I'm going to jump right back in. What I'm going to do is, actually, I'm going to jump to Slide 54 just because it has an overall layout, just to refresh everybody's memory since now it's been some time since we looked at it. So, you'll see on the left side here, we've got New Jersey Route 35 down below Deal Road, just to give everybody some orientation. Variance that's next on the list has to do with the canopy, which is right in the center of the circular area here. That's a, basically, an ordering canopy to protect the order or menu boards for the quick service restaurant. So, now I'm going to Slide 49. We had left off on the slide just before this last time. So, now I'm going to kind of walk you through the canopy variance. What it specifically is, is a front setback variance to the drive-through canopy. We're proposing 38.2 feet plus or minus versus the 50-foot that's required. So, there's several things to understand about this variance. One of the things is that the way we laid out the drive-through for the quick service restaurant, it goes in a kind of a counterclockwise around the segment. I'll let you just go back to Slide 4, so I have some point to those and describe it. So, it goes. So, if you can see my cursor here, the drive-throughs range like this counterclockwise. So, you start on the northerly end, you head in the westerly direction, then you head down south, menu board is order. Drive-through lane continues to the south, then turns to the east, behind the restaurant to the pickup window. So, that's the overall layout. So, one of the reasons the order canopy is here is because we placed this whole arrangement on the west side. Purpose of doing, I had touched upon this when I was going over the overall layout, was to maximize the length of those different queuing areas, but also to keep them out of any conflicts, both with, you know, external driveways to 35 or in terms of any internal intersections. We want to make sure if we had that queuing, or even if it kind of queued more than we even expect, that it would still not be in any of the major accessways.
So, this layout was done to accommodate the safety of the traffic circulation. So, in your opinion, as an engineer and a planner, the variance for the canopy is a better zoning alternative than having less safe circulation or less queuing?
Absolutely. And it's not only, obviously, in terms of vehicle circulation, but also pedestrian circulation. Located in this spot, it's not crossing any pedestrian paths. And that's, again, an external thing, where you've got sidewalks to Route 35 that are not interrupted. And then even the sidewalks to the restaurant itself, from the main parking area, not being interrupted by this drive-through circulation because it's out on the perimeter. So, we're not crossing any pedestrian paths and we're staying away from all the vehicular points of intersection.
Excuse me. Can you just enlarge that? It's a little bit difficult to see and to make comparisons to what you're saying.
At the last, at the last audit, we went through numerous slides that showed each of them individually. We can go back to that slide and take a moment.
Now, let's do that.
Thank you.
So, this is the quick service restaurant. So, this is where we are on the site, on the right here. This little area, that's the quick service restaurants, that's where we are globally. This part here is that area, just blown up significantly. So, the area I'm talking about goes right through here, through this parking aisle. That's the beginning. Now, we enter the order queuing area. There's two different stations, both under the canopy that is subject to the variance. Then you pull through there and approach the pickup window. And then there's also a bypass lane here. But as you'll see, as you go through this whole circulation room, you're not crossing any other vehicular patterns, nor are you crossing any pedestrian patterns. And then even if this backs up in here, it's backing into the more remote parking for the restaurant, would be the first conflict, if you will. And even the next conflict after that is a very internal driveway. So, that would be in a really worst-case scenario. But we're staying away, completely out of the exit aisle here that meets to Route 35. We're staying completely away from this main right-in, right-out driveway, as well as the main driveway into the quick service restaurant area. So, this is definitely, in my opinion, the best location in terms of both vehicular and pedestrian safety to put that. So, returning to the variance slide. So, the overall design maximizes queue length, as I just described, and that will help avoid site congestion. The canopy is going to improve the public experience since now you can order in a sheltered environment. So, it's raining, snowing, whatever. You've got to roll down the window so that you can clearly speak to whoever's taking your order from the menu board. And this way, you can do that without rain, snow, et cetera, coming into the car. In terms of the 35-foot buffer that's required along 35, that is fully provided. In terms of the width, there's another point of relief that is identified, but I'll get into that later. But it's not anything to do with the canopy, though, and it's actually something that is completely appropriate. The canopy provides some visual interest as well. Also provides a, basically, landmark, if you will, for wayfinding. It helps you identify where the lanes are. So, if you're unfamiliar with this particular quick service restaurant, you'll see that ordering canopy and know that that's where you have to head. And the structure does not have walls. So, even though it is subject to the building setback requirements, it's not truly a building. It is a canopy. So, as viewed from roadway or really from anywhere on site, it's not going to be nearly as substantive as it is viewed from the air. So, when you're looking at the plan, you see a big rectangle. But that's the roof. On the ground, you're, of course, not going to see that.
Let me just interrupt you. At the last meeting as A32, we introduced a perspective rendering of the Chick-fil-A consisting of one sheet. I even updated one I'd like to introduce for identification purposes only, and it'll certainly help with what Jeremy's discussing. It's A33. It's a perspective rendering for the Chick-fil-A prepared by Stephen Cooper Architect dated February 25, 2019, consisting of four sheets. It's so hard to compress it. We don't have, you know, the PowerPoint, but I do have a couple of copies that I can leave here and the public can pass it around. And if the board and the public just takes a moment to flip through it, you can see the profile that Jeremy was speaking about, how it really is low-profile and open on all sides with no walls, and it's just serving to protect the queue. No, I had indicated that we can't put it on the screen. It is the same. It's just more views.
So, I'll let you digest that a second as you're looking at it. Again, you can see the low profile that I was referring to. You can see how it helps provide some wayfinding as the menu boards themselves are rather small and they're at pedestrian level. So, this gives you a little more visual indication of where the drive-through is. And maybe we don't push much signage, et cetera, people have a better understanding of how to flow through the site.
Can I just, Mr. Brown, would you just want to put on the record that was going to...
Yes, Mr. Weinstein has just arrived and we've already discussed that he will listen to portion of the tape up until this point and provide the appropriate certification for this meeting.
Not to call you out, Mr. Weinstein, just so the court reporter has it.
No, I'm concerned.
All right.
So, with that, I don't have anything further on this particular variance. So, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next. So, this has to do, this is a very de minimis, or at least in my opinion, very de minimis variance, due to 10 particular islands throughout the site. We're just requiring for them to be 10 feet wide. We are proposing anywhere from five to nine feet. We think that this makes sense in a variety of areas for a number of different reasons. So, I'm going to start with the convenience store fuel station. So, that's the, of the three rings, you have the one on the left. And again, it just made more sense when we had gone through the whole PowerPoint because you had just seen these slides in full size. But if you'll recall from the gas station slide, I can go back that if we need to. Maybe I should. So, same as before, we've got the, this is the location right here along Route 35 on the left side overall. And then this is the bigger blow-up of that overall convenience store and fuel station. So, the islands that are protocol missing would be at the four corners of the restaurant. It's not the restaurant, the convenience store. So, literally at all four corners of this rectangle. The reason they're not provided is really two different reasons. The front two are really the main entrance. And these islands, as a convenience store is intended, they get a lot of traffic. So, it's heavy turnover in the parking, a lot of pedestrian activity. And the experience for convenience stores like this is that those islands get trampled on. So, then trying to grow landscaping, things like this, just is not very survivable because it gets beat up so much by the pedestrian traffic. It turns into a mud pit and is just unsightly, can even be unsafe from a slippery mud type of standpoint. So, in keeping with that, because it is so high turnover, not only are they not islands, but it's not asphalt either. These are, all these parking stalls here around the entire building are actually made out of concrete. Because, again, just the heavy use, the constant wear and tear of the tires turning in and out. It exerts a lot of force and it tend to pull up pavement and over time will actually wear it out because of the heavy in and out. It's not just the cars sitting there. So, that's why they're using concrete around the building for the actual parking stalls. So, it further delineates that. Allowing it to be concrete also allows it to be more easily cleaned. They can power wash and do, in fact, regularly power wash if there's gum or other things like that. They're not just picking up wind-blown debris, but they're also, things like gum or whatnot are actually getting power washed off on a regular basis. So, this surfacing and the treatment without islands allows all of that to happen and to maintain a very aesthetic and safe environment around the front of the store. The rear two islands, it's a similar but a little different reason. This is the loading area for the convenience store. So, not having the islands there allows the trucks to pull in, have a nice turning movement without having to go around the islands, potentially run them over, et cetera. And again, makes that whole area very easy to maintain and keep in a very professional appearance.
Are we making up for that lack of landscaping in those particular islands elsewhere throughout the site?
We absolutely are. As you may recall, in the beginning of the testimony last time, we had talked about open space coverage and we were well above the requirements. I might just get those numbers in. So, in terms of open space, we're proposing 53.5% where 25% is required. And as I also testified, that breakdown is not that we're making up for a lack in the commercial and the residential. It's almost a 50-50 split, 25.6% in the commercial and 27.9% in the residential. So, the commercial actually has enough open space to meet the ordinance requirement by itself. And then overall, we're meeting, you know, more than really doubling the open space requirement. So, we're not, it's not cheating on landscaping, if you will. It's really more of a practical application that in a high turnover setting such as a convenience store, we want to have something that's durable, state and aesthetic. All right. So, there are two other island areas. One is along the, really just, I guess, west, northwest of the hotel. There's a row of parking stalls that have two islands that are smaller. This is to accommodate the refuse and recycling containers that are in that area, just because of some unusual geometry. And then over on the restaurant B, there's another thing, again, to accommodate a refuse thing. However, I did look at this. We could just slide the refuse container down a little bit. It'll still make the turning movements work. So, we could actually comply on that one in particular. And then finally, in front of restaurant A, we've got, I think it's four, four or five, I think it's five, actually, instances where we have islands that are slightly smaller. However, there, we think the parking massing, having more parking closer to the building is an advantage. We're still having the landscaping overall and the deviation there are relatively minor. So, I think on balance, it's a better design alternative to have the way we've got with parking closer to the actual door to the restaurant. We certainly could comply. We have plenty of parking, as previously testified, very inaccessible to required parking. But I think from a massing and layout standpoint, this is a superior alternative. Similar thing on the islands is in front of the hotel. We've got parking stalls. There's two back-to-back rows that are 24 stalls, 20 is the maximum permitted. And again, a judgment call, we could certainly put the islands in. But we, again, we felt having the additional parking close to the hotel entrance made more sense. This deviation actually was born out of, or an evolution out of, the technical review process to align the various access driveways. And again, we think this is a superior design alternative. And it would not be something that's really viewable or noticeable, if you will, by the general public.
And that's really for all of these, except for maybe around the convenience store. You'd have to be internal to the site to even notice it if you did notice that it was nine feet or six feet instead of 10.
Correct. Next variance I'm going to talk about is the bollard lighting variance. This is a very, it's a technical variance. It's isolated around the hotel area. Again, we could design to be fully conforming, and the answer would be to put these lights up even taller on pole-mounted lights. But what we wanted to do, particularly on the rear of the hotel, the north side of the hotel that faces our neighbors to the north, we have to have that area lit because it's a pedestrian way. We need safety and security. But we didn't want to put the lights up higher on the traditional poles because then it would give more of a chance for glare and whatnot. So, we've put bollard lighting in. The downside from bollard lighting, it's really not a downside. It's more just a factor. It's very major. It's only 45 inches tall. So, the light source is very close to the ground. So, immediately under the bollard, you can't help but be bright because the light is right there, very close to the ground. Again, if it was taller, we wouldn't have what we call a hotspot. It would just spread out more.
So, basically, you're creating hotspots, but they're all within three feet of the bollards. No impact on anybody unless you're standing within three feet of the bollards.
And not only is there not any impact, but the conforming alternative would have more impact, more chance for glare and for, you know, light to be bouncing over the hotel, et cetera. This really focuses the light exactly where it's intended to be along the pedestrian walkway. Before I get to the variances generally, there are two additional variances that were identified by your planner that I just want to briefly touch on. And I'm going to refer to Mr. Higgins, March 3.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We didn't move the board's packet in for this time. So, B2 with today's date?
Yes, we can do that. Done.
Thank you.
So, I'm looking at page seven of that March 3, 2019 report. Right on the top is the first of the two additional variances that I'll touch on. These are, again, are both very minor in nature. The first has to do with landscaped area along the front property line. We're just requiring a 25-foot landscaped area. There are two areas along the jug handle that do not meet that. When I say the jug handle, I'm referring to the jug handle here, which is at the south-westerly portion of the site or the north-eastern quadrant of 35 Deal Road intersection. The two areas specifically are right here, essentially opposite the fuel islands. And then there's another little area here by the restaurant A where the parking lot comes a little closer to the jug handle ramp. In both cases, I think those are de minimis impacts. On the fuel side, one of the things, advantages you get is we're putting a new pedestrian connection through to our relocated bus shelters. So, we're going to have direct access from the bus shelter, not only to the convenience store, but then through that to the rest of the development. I think that makes a lot of sense from a pedestrian circulation standpoint. Also, again, it provides for that additional parking. Again, heavy turnover use. While we have plenty of parking, we want to approximate the store. So, I think those design elements are certainly outweigh any negative. And similarly, as I just described before, for the parking island widths, having this area that is a little bit less than the 25 feet, again, providing good massing, parking closer to the building is definitely a better design alternative. One thing I'll note, too, with the massing, we could have flipped the building, put it further into the site. But what I like about this, particularly for the Deal Road front, is you're going down Deal Road. Once you get past that 75-foot buffer, we do have this little brief window of commercial development. But we've orientated both restaurant buildings to provide a visual buffer. So, you're not going to see a sea of parking or anything like that. You'll actually be looking at the two restaurants. So, that'll be a very nice aesthetically appealing view. And there is, of course, the Deal Road landscape buffer for the commercial part is also there, just south of Restaurant A. The other one is even less significant variance. Along the roadway, you're not supposed to have landscaping within 10 or right-of-way line or 15 feet of a curb. The idea there is so that the street doesn't feel tight as you're driving down it. In this case, we have our, around our signs, our signs are fully conforming in terms of the setback. But we have landscaping around the base of all those signs. That landscaping protrudes into those setback areas. That's all low-level landscaping. It's certainly not going to make the road feel tight. And certainly, I think the aesthetic benefit of that landscaping around the sign base is far outweighs any detriment or, actually, exists in this case.
You can't hear it, Sandy. There's someone calling out from the audience. Maybe the chairman, you can remind them.
Yeah. So, the applicant's attorney is reminding us up here that in part, our stenographer, who is writing down every word, is having a hard time trying to keep up with those who are testifying. So, especially for those who were not here last time or are not familiar with these proceedings, we need to have only one person talking at one time. And that person is recognized by the chair. And, you know, so right now, we have the applicant's engineer talking. So, thank you for your cooperation.
So, now I'm going to just jump back to Slide 53. This really applies to all the variances I've testified on, both at the prior hearing and this evening. I'll note that all the proposed uses are permitted uses. The variances, as I've explained individually, are for design enhancements. And I think on balance, the benefits outweigh the detriments. I believe they can all be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. In fact, most of them, if not all, actually advance the public good. And they can be granted without substantial impairment of the intent, purpose of the zone plan and ordinance. And I've explained in each of the cases how we're meeting the intent in an alternative way. So, that concludes my direct plaintiff testimony.
So, at this point, I would open up Mr. Lang for questions from the board, the board's professionals, and then the public, as is the general order that the board goes in.
Do you want the board to have any questions for Mr. Lang?
On your landscape exhibit, where on Deal Road will the sign be that you're proposing?
There's two signs on Deal Road. So, let's...
There's actually three signs all total.
No, I believe there's the residential.
So, there is, on the easterly end, there's the residential sign, which is right here. It's on the west side of the easterly driveway. Then, on the right-in, right-out driveway on Deal Road, which is roughly where my little laser pointer is at, that is the Wawa sign that had the fuel pricing on. And then there's an overall shopping center sign that's just east of the jug handle ramp. And all three of those are monument signs.
Ms. Close, one of the items that we introduced at the last meeting, and I handed out additional copies this time, is something labeled "site plan sign." And on that, there's color dots that show the location of all the signs on the site plan. Thank you.
Are you referring to A30, the sign package?
I am.
Okay, very good.
I wonder if I could ask you a question. You should. On the sewage and the storm, the storm system that was put in place, one thing that it made me feel like when you were testifying that this was a little exploratory and may not have been done as often in developments like this. And it might be, I want to know if we're on a bleeding edge or a leading edge or mainstream. What's your thought on that?
I'm really happy for the questions. This is my favorite topic to talk about. So, thank you.
But we're not going to go longer than we have to for the purpose of making our point.
We're going to try not to.
Okay.
So, yes, this site is on the leading edge, but it's not the bleeding edge. New Jersey's actually kind of late to the party. Green infrastructure has taken hold throughout many courses in the United States already. And the state is, as is sometimes the case, is a little slower. Maybe slower's not the right word, a little more conservative to adopting newer methodologies. But the state is actually in the middle of doing that right now. December 3 of last year, they actually formally promulgated proposed rules that would not only allow for green infrastructure, but actually would mandate it. So, you wouldn't be able to do the gray infrastructure approach once these new rules are adopted and become effective. So...
I'm more concerned about this leading edge, bleeding edge. So, on the leading edge side, how many other sites do you know of that are at this size that have been done? You know, is it five or is it 500 that have been done in like this?
A number of sites have been done like this with various green infrastructure practices. I have a site that was built, for instance, forest pavement as part of this. My earliest installation of forest pavement was 2007. So, that, you know, there's 12 years of experience. And that's right by my office, actually, so I get to look at that site fairly often. But everything that's on the site has been done before. A number of my clients, although it's not required yet in New Jersey, a number of them are publicly traded companies and they have green or sustainable mandates. So, a number of them are doing this, even though it's not required by the state rules, they're doing it anyway from a more global perspective. So, we have installations like this all over New Jersey and really everything that's here. The only thing I haven't done before that's on this particular project, it's a little unique, although I've done both components of it, is stacking a bioretention basin over an arch system. But both of those work very well, and there's absolutely no reason they shouldn't work together. I thought it was actually a great solution, as I testified to last time, it came out of our TRC process. Mr. Fitzgerald was concerned about our original proposal, which was just a bioretention basin with retaining walls. And he was concerned aesthetically, and he was right, that that might not look as good. So this is a way now of keeping the bioretention very shallow, it'll look more like just a landscaped area. But then we get all the volume underneath with the arches.
And also, Mr. Weinstein, just so you're aware, although there have been countless technical review meetings between the engineers to get it to this point, and while it's all been determined to be feasible, and as you saw, Mr. Fitzgerald issued a pretty lengthy letter with a lot of comments of additional things that need to be done. So, again, we've agreed that we can comply with everything with his letter, but it's still going to be tweaked quite a bit in order to satisfy Bill to get there.
Yeah, Bill, so I was just concerned that when you were given the testimony in the beginning, it just felt like it was not as proven as maybe we all might have wanted, and I just didn't know how.
I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I guess when he was given his, when he was given testimony, and I could have been reading into this the wrong way, is I just wanted, I just wanted us to kind of get a sense of how confident we are in that system being put in place.
Okay.
And how proven it is in other places.
All right. So what, the way we approached this, because it's a fairly large application and it's been known for a while that it'd be public interest. We had a number of, once they were complete, we had a number of technical review meetings with the applicant and his professional staff to iron out the layout of the site. Because we felt that as long as there were no anticipated changes to the layout of the site, how the driveways would interact with Deal Road, 35, circulate the site, the whole thing, that that would pretty much make it easy for anyone that comes to the hearing, looks at the slides, see what's going on. The kind of things that are involved in my letters, I believe they have their traffic engineer, when he testifies, he'll address my questions on traffic. He's already submitted a written report that's been on file for well more than two weeks or three weeks to address all of that, so that's available for the public to read. He did address every comment that he had. And the other stuff is really a lot of detail as to drainage and stormwater and grading. It's not going to change what that looks like.
Bill, one of the things he was asking, and I think you didn't hear, was he just wanted to make sure that the techniques that we were proposing were not so new age and edgy that they haven't been proven. He wanted to get a level of confidence that they are tried and true.
I mean, the state has what they call a best practices manual, and they followed it.
Okay, okay, great.
Bill, before you sit back down, just a quick question. With the stacking of the two BMPs that we're trying with the bioretention over the arches, have we talked about the maintenance plan for that, to make sure that that's going to be maintainable?
Oh, yes, here's why it will be maintainable, okay? The upper level is a sand filter. There will be 24 inches of sand between the ground surface, which will be planted, and filter fabric under it, which is now above the gravel surrounding the storage bit. However, the storage chambers underneath will have access points. So then, if anything could possibly get into it, and I don't really believe it can, you have 24 inches of sand, the state rates that at 80% total suspended solid removal. But it's still maintainable and it's cleanable.
Okay, thank you.
Jeremy, I wanted to ask you two questions. One was, what I noticed on the housing development...
Mr. Weinstein, can you just go a little outline of the town area?
Okay. Is that better?
Much.
Okay. On the housing development side, one thing I've known, that kind of sticks out to me is that there's really no, like, playground or open area for that community to kind of congregate or for kids to play and those kind of things. I was wondering what your thoughts were on that.
And I thought I mentioned it, but I might have skipped or gone too fast through it. There is actually an area here, there's two things in this location between Restaurant B and the residential community. There's a community garden area, and that's the, you probably can't see it to scale, but there's a lighter and darker green. The larger and lighter green color is meant to be a community garden area, so that would be an area for gathering, et cetera. And immediately next to that is a play surface area. I'm not sure that we've locked down on the equipment yet, but there's a pretty generous-sized area for, you know, like a totlade-type play equipment there.
Right, and my design though is at the end of the area, not towards the middle of the community, towards the end of the area, right?
It is, and our thinking here was it was kind of on the way into, you know, figuring that the residential community is probably not using the hotel. We were kind of looking at that as more where they might be walking to. So we put it kind of in that direction so that it made some sense going back and forth. And then, of course, if they're looking for recreational opportunities beyond that, the park next door is the obvious choice. And we are provided not only vehicular, but pedestrian connectivity there as well. So actually, as you come out of the development, you can go either direction, east or west. You know, west to the onsite, east to the very expansive park.
And my, thanks. And my last, my last question, ready for analysis, is inside the development of the commercial area, did you think about putting some kind of center, center place that people could congregate or something that had some gazebo-type feeling to it or something that would give us some park-like community inside the community?
We did think about it, and the wrestle here is when you have something like that, it can also become a loitering spot, so it's a real give or take. If we were going to do it, where I would put it is next to the retail building, just to the west of it. We've got a bioretention facility here, but it's shallow. We could incorporate into that, you know, kind of like you're talking about a gathering space, some benches or a gazebo, that type of thing over it. But again, I'm always concerned that you could have loitering too, so it's kind of a, you know, I'm not sure which is the right way to do it, but there is space available that you could do something like that.
So that was something the board felt strongly about, we could incorporate that into the commercial.
It's not so much on the commercial side, that I had the same questions about parks as well. It's not so much on the commercial side that I, you know, gazebo's nice over there for those folks. It's more about, you know, you're adding all these residents over there. While they do have the park nearby, I agree with Jeff that, you know, having someplace nice, you're calling it the town center. There's nothing center about any of that residential. So, to me, you know, to take out a townhouse, to maybe add a little bit more green area in there, I think would make it a little bit more appealing to that. And it looks, to be honest, a little greedy, like you've tried to slap as many townhouses in there to get as much as you could get out of them.
If I could remind the board chairman to ask the public from, from either clapping, cheering, or anything of that matter, that's all for the public.
Ladies and gentlemen, just let the board members make their comments, and whether you agree or disagree, please don't show any emotion like this.
Mr. Duffy, in response to your comment, this was a painstaking process with numerous meetings with the public, as well as the towns' professionals, the council, came to the planning board. And what is designed is not greedy, what is designed is entirely consistent with what the ordinance required. If there was a strong zoning desire or design desire to have that center in the middle of the townhouses or a gathering space in the middle of townhouses, it would have been put into the ordinance. As you read this ordinance, it's very specific as to...
But real quick, the ordinance doesn't say that it's supposed to be called the Town Center.
No, but that's...
So I understand what you're saying about you comply, I get that, I understand that. I'm saying as a member of the community, as a voting member of this planning board, all right, let's not forget, you still don't have your approvals yet.
All right.
All right, so we have a say in what we'd like to have, the council as well.
Within the confines of the statute and the ordinance.
Absolutely, I understand that.
That's all I'm saying. So what I'm, I'm particularly jumping on the comment where you said it seems a bit greedy because it can't be considered greedy if it's in full compliance with your ordinance and what your governing body contemplates for here. If you'd like to see that because that's your personal preference, that's different. But as far as the ordinance goes, which is really what governs the decisions that this board makes, we do comply and there is no requirement to have a meeting or gathering.
Sure.
But we do, and it perhaps wasn't shown, and when the architect comes up, I'll have him go back through the video and fast-forward, there actually is a gathering area within the residential portion.
Okay, because I didn't see that in any of this.
Okay, so it was in the video, and I'll have him go back and show that. And as was just indicated, there actually is an area where we can create a gathering area. It doesn't have to necessarily be a pagoda, but it could be benches and sitting areas within the retail, to make it feel more of a destination.
Right, just to be, just to be clear, you know, we all, this is the first time, we're all seeing this, right? So we're all looking at it freshly for a time, and it's a first-time presentation. So whether it's been bounded around by a lot of people for a lot of months, that's not here or there.
Understood.
So we have to kind of take it...
Hundred percent understood, it was just with regard to that one little...
Yep, my other question was, was there any thought about putting any kind of bike lanes or anything like that? Because it looked like to me that the, that we went through a bare minimum on the streets inside the town hall, on the widths, and I was wondering what that meant to kids driving cycles and bicycles and...
We're actually not, we're actually on the maximum for the streets. The RSIS for the street classification would allow 24, 28, or 30-foot wide streets. We have 30.
Okay.
So they are, you know, very generous in this area, so we are, not only do we have head-on parking, you know, parking, since you strike parking stalls for visitors, but there are many locations where you're parking on both sides of the road as well, potentially because of that width. And we did that on purpose, we didn't want it to feel tight or, you know, you know, we wanted to be able to have that, we described basically, we don't have bikes and vehicles share the roads, so to speak. So there's plenty of width for that to occur. We're not striping bike lanes, and I think that might actually impair the character to physically paint it on the ground. Certainly, the width is there.
Okay, okay, great.
I guess my question, as it relates to the bike lanes as well, I don't know, Jeff, we didn't talk, by the way, just that's... But along Deal and around 35, one of the, you know, I do see some sidewalks as it goes along this, on Deal Road, it looks like you can cross. I live in Wayside, and one of my big complaints is that I can't take my bicycle and safely get from my house over Wayside to the ocean. The only reason I moved to this community, and my family did, was to do that. So now, while we have a good opportunity to, you know, make this better, let's make it better, so... So can you explain to me the bike paths along Deal Road and kind of how that operates? Why is there that weird spot where the, you know, where the jug handle is? And then, you know, is there any biking along Route 35 as well?
I want to make sure I'm answering your question. I can talk to you about the sidewalks along Deal Road.
Yeah, I guess both. Was there consideration for some bike lanes to be included along that area? As well as the sidewalks, and if there wasn't any consideration there, the sidewalks? And what have you done to improve that area along that to make it easier for those of us that live on that side of town to get over to the other one?
So from a bike lane standpoint, I'm going to defer to our traffic engineer. I know that the geometry is very tight in that area because of the right-of-way constraints and they basically happen to marry the two sides of Route 35, but I'll let him speak to that. In terms of the pedestrian connectivity, it was absolutely consideration. And then, so there is sidewalking proposed, both along Route 35 and Deal Road, that will come all the way to the intersection, come to the crosswalk. You can even see in the photograph here, you can see the crosswalk striping shows up in the area of photograph. We are connecting to that from both directions, so you can do that. There is a bizarre shape to the sidewalk in this area here, but that's because we're saving some existing trees. There's another expert that will talk about that later, but that's the only reason for that path of the sidewalk.
Okay.
Jeremy, I have a question. Can you toggle to slide 5 for me, on the subdivision subdivision? And then I want to go back to 54. Okay, I just, I was looking at this, and when you first explained it last week, it was 31 and change of the inch. And then with the subdivisions, you have down at 14.87, and commercial, residential, 14.52, which came out to like 29.39. So I'm looking at that subdivision there, and now can you toggle back to 54?
Sure.
I'm trying to get an idea of the entire property. So out of this 31 and change and the 29, how many acres are you actually building on? And how many acres are untouched? Do you have that break there?
Well, I don't have an untouched, though. I know, I know what our open space numbers are, I'm not sure that I have... So in round numbers, about 23 acres are being developed, about eight acres are being untouched.
So going, it looks like a road on the north on the top, it actually goes beyond that, because I asked you to go to that slide number...
That's a stream, actually.
Okay, that's the stream, that straight line?
You're going about right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the brook.
So your property actually is, is above that, where it ends. So the brook is inside your property, correct?
Yes.
That's why I asked you to go to slide 5.
Okay, now I understand, okay, yes.
I'm trying to get an idea of the entire property.
I had a question in one of my letters regarding the same idea that Mr. Duffy's talking about with bike lanes. And I had to ask the question, maybe rhetorical, if the roadways, vehicular, travelways, if you will, couldn't be narrower some? And maybe make room for wider pathways that could be used for biking and or walking and connected to the towns. Logan Road has a bike lane actually dedicated and striped. There's quite a bit of bicycle usage and pedestrian usage and rollerblading in the test site or at the lake park.
Bill, are you talking about within the site?
Within the, within the...
Residential portion?
Yeah.
No, 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 I understood that, I think what Mr. Duffy was talking about, though, was bike lanes on Deal Road.
Well, but connecting to the township, township has them in the park and across Deal Road on Logan Road, that's what I'm saying. So I see there are sidewalks in convenient places. If the sidewalks were wider and the two minutes pavement roadways, drive-by vehicle paths, if you will, were a little narrower, it might seem to work, you know?
Understood, but I don't know that it helps along the Deal Road front edge and as it crosses Route 35.
I guess my point is, I'm not an engineer, I'm not, you know, this is way over my ballpark, but there has to be, I would just like for there to be some sort of real consideration given to bicycle traffic in this area, be it on Deal Road, be it on the sidewalks. My point is, second floor, going from Wayside over to be able, we're going to improve this area, so let's really improve this.
So where did, where did we leave it on the, on the open spaces that we wanted to create? Is that something we're going to talk about later, or is that...
Well, that's what I was getting at. I was like, can you just circle back and give me those numbers again? You're building on 17 acres?
No, we're building on about 23 acres. Now, that doesn't mean it's all impervious, like a lot, it's not. But we're disturbing about 23 acres, about eight acres were not disturbed.
Okay.
And the exact figures I have here are that there's going to be 21.59 acres that are going to be disturbed and 7.8 acres that will be undisturbed, and then 1.69 acres that are going to be dedicated either to the town or to the state for road footprints.
I'm sorry, Mr. Weinstein, you were saying where we left off with open space? Are you talking about the gathering spaces?
The gathering spaces, yeah.
I mean, if that, certainly if that, should we get to a point of approval, if that's something that the board requires as a condition, that's something that we would add to the plan.
Great.
Anybody else on the board have any more questions?
Well, if I may, just pick up where we left off. I wasn't suggesting that we're ignoring what Mr. Duffy's saying, but if you look at the plan, you'll see that there are continuous sidewalks from the easterly boundary of the site to the highway. They may not be parallel to the curb line on Deal Road, but you could certainly get there. And so if those paths remain a little wider at the expenses, the will or benefit of cutting down some impervious cover and putting more green in front of the townhouses, it might be something to consider.
Mr. Kim, if I could ask a question to expedite this. So you heard some comments by board members, and it appears that we certainly won't end tonight. Do you think it would be a good suggestion if you discuss possible upgrades or changes to comply or address the board members with our professionals? to comply or address the board members with our professionals?
Yeah, I think that we understand what the board is looking for, and we're happy to have our professionals meet with your professionals to see if we can't come up with something to satisfy everybody. I think that the gathering spaces within the site may be an easier fix than the bike accessibility, although we may be able to do something on bike accessibility within the project. I just have concerns with the ability to do it on the public right-of-ways. But again, yeah, we'd be happy to meet with the board's professionals and see what we can come up with.
And therefore, would you offer to have that dialogue with our professionals and bring back before the vote by the board on those issues?
I'd prefer we wait to any of those decisions until the end of the meeting to see how far along we get, but it sounds like that's the direction we're going in.
Okay. Thank you.
That would be fine. Any more questions from the board?
I have one quick question.
Right ahead.
With regard to the island areas in front of the Wawa on the west side, they're fairly large triangular areas. What's the feasibility of putting decorative pavers there at grade, not raised up, but at grade, because if they're raised up, they're both tripping hazards and hazards for snow removal. And it would be more attractive looking, much better than having striped concrete.
Bear with me one second. Yes.
Let me just make a note of that.
I have one more question, Chair.
So for the record, are you going to stipulate to that?
Yeah, we're going to show the decorative pavers and a little landscape islands around the quick service, I'm sorry, about the convenience store.
And between now and the next time, you can determine with the professionals if they have the comfort level regarding approval without details or not?
Right, we'll speak to them. Sorry, I thought I heard there was another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Was there any consideration given to electric car plug-ins? Any electric car plug-ins on the site at all? Any consideration given to that, or?
They certainly...
I know you have a gas station there, which is nice, for those of us that drive gas cars, but for those of us that will be driving electric cars, was there any consideration given? Do you have any thoughts on it? Considering our town building has electric car plug-ins?
We have plenty of parking on the site, so yes, we could absolutely dedicate stalls to that. I know Wawa is one of our customers, you know, are my company's customers, and they are looking at that. They're actually rolling out some test sites now, so that, I'm not guaranteeing at the moment it'll be here at this particular one, but it is something that's certainly coming overall. And there is sufficient parking on the site where we could reserve stalls for that purpose.
Again, Mr. Krymko, if you could come back next time with specifics, if the professionals feel that's important, relevant?
Any more questions from the board members? Right ahead.
Can we go back to the sign on Deal Road, or should I wait till the architect himself?
The testimony from the sign was from Eunice Belang, so we can certainly talk about the sign. And when you say the sign on Deal Road, based on your comments at the last meeting, it'd be the Wawa sign. So one of the things that I'd be opportunity to do is speak with the Wawa representatives and talk about the reasons why. And there's actually, it's not mandated by the state statute, but the intent and the overall intent and what they're trying to do with the state statute is when you do have a gasoline station in New Jersey, it's very important from a regulatory standpoint that the drivers from any roadway where they could potentially go to this gas station would know what the pricing is. And they would know what the pricing is in time in order to get there. I'll just, you know, read for, it's New Jersey statutes 56:6-2.3, and it basically says that no dealer can offer sale any motor fuel without attaching with a suitable bracket or display by sign on the premises and visible from adjacent roadway or both. So the state legislature has an interest, so much so that they put it in their statute to promote the advertising of the gas prices. What we can do is, I know that on the sign that was submitted, the gas price lettering was big in relation to the Wawa, so one of the things that we can do is look at reducing that letter size and making the sign more attractive, so that isn't the feature, but while still keeping that, those numbers big enough that the passersby's can see it and turn in in time, so at least we can meet the intent of the, or of the statute.
My problem with that is, with this development, being so close to residential areas across the street and the layout, which is, you've fully gone through, my problem is just having a Wawa sign, period, on Deal Road. I get it on 35, they're all up and down the road. That just to me is just like a thorn in someone's side, looking at that sign. That's just an opinion.
Okay, and just one question. I mean, the commercial signs are permitted there. The Wawa sign, because it usually, because the statute requires it to have, the gas numbers on it aren't usually there. But again, it's important to be there to identify it before the drivers get past and can't turn in and won't have the ability to see it from the road.
They're either going to go straight or they're going to turn right. Is that correct, when they get to 35?
Potentially.
So they're going to see that sign on 35.
Right, but once they see the sign, if you want to go back to that, where that sign is, once they see the sign on 35, they're already past it.
This is the one that's on Deal Road, actually. That's the sign that looks like it said this location.
Right, but where's the sign on 35?
The sign on 35.
I think the concern is on Deal Road, there's a lot of...
So they'd already be passing, wouldn't have the opportunity to go into the site if they, if they get that far.
It's just a comment.
Understood.
Yeah, I agree with that saying. That's an eyesore. I agree with, I agree with that's an eyesore.
Because the numbers are...
Yeah, because the numbers, just the idea that we're trying to preserve some look and feel of Deal Road that starts crowding into it. So I think best as we can, we're trying to preserve some kind of feeling along Deal Is it going to be working?
Just to make the record clear, the Wawa sign is not permitted by the ordinance. A identification sign to identify the entrance is, and that's provided, it's provided on the other side of the entrance because it has to be 200 feet away from the residential area. But the Wawa sign, first of all, it's not permitted. I feel the lady's a problem, and the fact that it's 80 feet away from the nearest residence, residential property, I think there's a real concern there.
Yeah. Yeah, I think just to get back, oh, now I'm really... So just getting back to, you know, John about the bike paths and all that kind of stuff is, is, just trying, I think to me at least, is trying to preserve how Deal Road looks and feels from start to finish, as much as we can. That's a, that would be your goal for us.
Could I ask the board a question on one of the lines? Right now, we have a traditional sidewalk along Deal Road. How would you feel about converting that to a multi-use path as opposed to a sidewalk?
That need to be wide?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
I mean...
So kind of like the path that's currently in the test site? Maybe not, maybe not as wide. And then I know on Whale Pond, don't they have that path that kind of goes along Whale Pond and there's portions along Deal Road when you go from the library site to the main portion? I think there's also one of those paths that goes along Deal Road, or something like that. All right, we'll look at that, we'll go over that with Bill and Jim.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other board member?
Yeah, I got one. So the bio retention basin in the lower left-hand corner, the one that's going to be dedicated to DOT?
Yes.
And that's going to have a similar planting scheme to the other bio retention basins, yeah?
Correct.
Who is going to be responsible for maintaining that? Is that going to be DOT, or is that going to be the person maintaining the rest of them?
It will be the NJ DOT.
Do they have a lot of experience maintaining one with a planting as complicated as this?
They do now. They recently hired a professional woman named Sandy Blick at DOT. She used to be with the Department of Environmental Protection, and was actually one of their stormwater experts. So she has really, by herself, changed the DOT's entire view of stormwater, which used to be, you know, get it away as far, as fast as humanly possible. She is much more of an environmentally-minded person and has literally kind of almost single-handedly changed the agency's perspective. So she is very, you know, somewhat amazing, frankly, very into green infrastructure and has really changed her whole direction. So I think you're going to see the DOT be much more responsive on drainage and stormwater just generally because of that shift of the agency.
If you have some maintenance in part, what's your experience?
We're also having some discussions at the technical review meeting regarding expanding possible caretakers beyond the DOT, should they fail to...
Right, that's what I was going to offer, one of the things. And again, as you know, this project is subject to a permit from the DOT, and they will have jurisdiction and own that land, so there's only so much that we can do where we're somewhat at their mercy. But one of the things that we will certainly discuss with them as part of our permitting process with the state is to allow for an easement either to the owner of the development or to the town who would have the right, but not the obligation to maintain it if the DOT did not. I think that's what you're talking about, right?
Bill, do you have a preference on who would be the alternate responsible party?
Yeah, I agree with you, I'll go.
We can certainly discuss it with DOT, then when we dedicate that, if we can reserve a right to maintain it.
Any other board members with questions? Professionals? I'd like to take this opportunity to open up this portion of the meeting to the general public. You are welcome to ask questions or actually cross-examine. Mr. Lang, regarding the testimony that he has rendered, I just want to remind you that your questions have to be confined to Mr. Lang's testimony, and your opinion is not something that, regarding other areas, is not something that would be true made at this time.
Yeah, for the benefit of those who have not been to planning board meetings before, including the last meeting in this application, there will be an opportunity at the end of this hearing for anybody to make comment, and at that time, if you're desirous of doing so, you will be placed under oath. One of the reasons why our chair is emphasizing that you need to restrict your questions, like Mr. Cassidy I'm sure will, is because you're not under oath. And again, that's part of the process. Thank you.
Mr. Cassidy?
Yes, thank you. My name's Harold Cassidy. We've lived in Ocean Township for 42 years. The last 34 is at number one, Suri Lane. We compel to use Logan Road and Deal Road on a regular basis. So I have a few questions. Some basic things, forgive me if they're too basic. There are two lots, is that correct?
Two proposed lots, yes.
Okay. On the lot, that's the residential lot. Under the current ordinance, what is the minimum lot size? Lot size for a residence?
So this is a table that shows the minimum for, actually both commercial and residential. So you'll see for the residential, the minimum required is 10 acres, and we're providing 14 and a half.
No, but if you were to subdivide it into individual lots, what's the minimum? If there is a minimum?
You can't in this...
No, no, I'm not asking the witnesses.
But I'm telling you that under the ordinance, it doesn't permit it.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to direct my questions to the witness, not the chairman.
Proceed.
So there is no such ordinance requirement or allowance, it's not how the ordinance is structured.
Okay, so if we can go back to the, please, to the overall picture of the lot that's So you have 70 residences, correct?
Yes.
Now, you did an analysis of what the traffic would result from this site as it's proposed?
I did not.
Somebody else did?
Yes.
The impression that I have, and this is, I don't know if you're not the correct person to answer this, you'll tell me, okay? All the technical issues are one thing, but putting it aside and looking at the whole big picture as one, and looking at the impact that it would have on the community where there's nothing near now, and we have all these uses, hotels, and all the rest of it. Did you or anybody else judge what impact that would have on the community as a general proposition?
Well, that would put me in the shoes of your governing body, which wouldn't necessarily be appropriate. Your governing body, your planning board have done that, have looked at that, and, you know, I think what they've seen is, and I'm going to put, this is Slide 3 up, you'll see that this location is part of the Route 35 corridor, and that, it really makes a lot of sense, what we're doing here, really fills in this corridor. As I explained when I went through the detailed layout, it has an appropriate transition from Route 35 where we have our most intense uses, then our more middle road uses are in the middle of the site, and then as you get out toward the east or toward the north, they become full residential, and then it transitions nicely either into the park to the east of us or to the residential properties north and south of us. So I think from a planning standpoint, the governing body's done an excellent job in laying out the ordinance in a way that you've got a really nice transition from an intense commercial corridor, that is Route 35, to Playa Park, that is obviously an open space area. So this really bridges that, you can look at it graphically, it graphically bridges that from 35 to the park. So I think we've done, or not we, the governing body rather, has done a great job in planning.
So with all due respect, I'm asking the question of you as an expert, whether you have made a judgment, analyzed this. You're asking this community to adopt your plan. I'm asking you that before you continue to ask the community to adopt your plan, have you yourself or anybody else on your team done an overall analysis of the ultimate impact this would have on the community?
I don't know what you mean by overall impact. We've certainly analyzed the impacts.
Let me just, I have to just put an objection or a clarification. He testified as an engineer and a planner. And if Mr. Cassidy wants to ask if he's looked at it from an engineering impact or a planning impact, that would be appropriate. As far as an overall impact, I have individual witnesses who are going to testify as to the various aspects.
You can just, you can answer yes or no.
Well, it isn't as simple as yes or no, Mr. Brown, because if I say no, it implies that it wasn't considered by the applicant's team, and that isn't the case. So I think to say yes or no, and then to just go one step further, when Mr. Cassidy, and I just want to clarify this, is asking if we've considered the impact, he's disregarding the witness's answer where he indicated that your governing body considered the impact on behalf of the town and rendered these uses permitted and appropriate at this density, at this level. It's not the applicant's, it's not the applicant's job to decide whether or not the zoning is or isn't appropriate. There is zoning in place and we're proposing development consistent with it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm asking questions and I'm getting an argument from a lawyer.
Yes. And Mr. Cassidy, I mean, for the members of the public, Mr. Cassidy is a very seasoned attorney and a resident, and it is correct that simple questions, you know, can be directed to the witness himself.
And I can object as to if or not it's appropriate for this witness, which is what I did.
And I would just suggest to streamline this, if our witness can just answer it as best as he can, and there will be other witnesses for sure in different areas, and go ahead, Mr. Cassidy, next.
So, sir, you do understand that regardless of what the ordinance is, regardless of whether any one particular variance may or may not be reasonable, you do understand that part of what this board has to determine is whether there's going to be a negative impact on the community? You understand that, correct?
I disagree with it as broadly stated as you've just put, and I don't believe that that is what the board's function is in terms of this application.
So you're saying even if it has, in your judgment... So you're saying even if it has, in your judgment, even if you're applying, you're asking the town to approve, has a negative impact on all the residents in the community, they're bound, that's not a consideration for this board?
His characterization of negative impact is well beyond the testimony I've offered. I have, I have done and testified on engineering and planning. I've certainly analyzed from a civil engineering perspective and from a professional planning perspective the application and I've found that from a civil engineering perspective, it's consistent with your ordinance, it's consistent with the various state and regional regulations. From a planning perspective, it's consistent with your zoning laws, it's consistent with your master plan. I think just generally speaking, as I just testified to a little bit earlier, I think it represents good planning. I think the governing body did a good job. I think because you have a well-established commercial corridor here, that you need to be responsive to that, I think the governing body was. And then the fact that you've got on the other side of us kind of bookending us a very large public park, I think this is exactly the type of use that should be here. In fact, even more granular, it's not just a park, there's actually a library and a museum there, so it's not just open or unused land. There are actually public assets, activities that occur immediately to the east. So to have that go from those public activities to residential to, you know, some form of retail restaurant, then to more high-intensity restaurant and convenience store as you get up to Route 35, to me, that's textbook planning, a poster child of how planning is supposed to lay out. So again, I'm very satisfied both from a civil engineering and from a planning perspective that this site is appropriately laid out, both internally and then in terms of the external context of its surroundings, that it's appropriately laid out.
Ms. Krumko, just having a vision ahead, among the professionals who you plan to have testified, do you have any other, any answers?
No.
Okay.
Just one more question.
Okay, Mr. Cassidy, go right ahead.
I mean, obviously, I'm not going to engage in debate. It's not appropriate, even though that's what we're getting. One question. If, if you are not the person who can speak to the question that I ask about the impact, whether it's going to have negative impact on this community as a whole, who on your team will be the person that we can ask that question of?
I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassidy.
Okay, now, anyone else in the general public like to step up?
Governor Dan Casalik, 1620 Melville Street in Oakhurst, oh, that's okay. Dan Casalik, K O W S A L U K. Mr. Lang, what is the setback from the northern, the residential setback from the northern property line?
I was looking at slide 17, I think. So you're talking about the setback from the northern property line?
Yes, sir.
So it's 251 feet.
Is, is that to the residential or is that to the commercial?
The reason I ask is because they amended the ordinance to make it 260 to the commercial. So I just, I saw that up on the slide, I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and if it is in fact 260 and not 240. I believe it was amended on May 10th, ordinance 2307.
I'd ask the planner, I mean, I'm aware that 2303 is what that represents, I wasn't aware of 2307.
I'm not aware of 2307 either at this point.
Is anybody on the board aware of 2307? Ordinance amending it to 260 feet to the residential?
Amending C7?
Yes, ma'am. I have it on my phone if anybody would like to see it, it was an email from the buyer. Would you like me to bring it up? Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to see it. Sure.
If you would bring it over to our planner, he can, he can comment on it. He might give you the cell phone back.
That's my wife's.
I want to keep it there, right?
It's not ringing a bell, but it does say, so say 240 feet from the northern property line.
Correct. So I'm referring to.
260.
This one says 240. I'm reading.
To the residential.
Okay, we're in some trouble. A second.
Are you saying to, and just while he's looking, if I could just ask you, and I'm just going to call you Danny because I don't want to pronounce your last name. When you say 260 to the residential, are you talking about to the residential component of our development or are you talking about to the residential toward north?
To the residential to the north, because I know that you do have, you have the daycare center all the way to the north. So my, my house is the first residential on Melville Street and then you have the other streets. But you also have a daycare center on 35 and I thought the purpose was to make it 240 from the resident, from the daycare center, which would be commercial, a commercial. But then they threw the residents an extra 20 feet residential.
This is the governing ordinance and I'm not 100% sure it is, but I'm not sure it's not. It's 260 feet to the nearest residential use.
So I guess, Mr. Lang, while we're looking that up, do you?
Could you give us, Mr. Chair, can we, two minutes go to this and we can answer properly?
We'll stay in session, but we'll give them an opportunity to review what's being presented.
Danny, is there a second page to this? We don't have, it's just a free chart.
It's just, yeah.
It's on the town listing. Okay, so that free chart is from the town listing, it's adopted in the next.
Oh, I got it. My wife's Sarah, same last name.
Ms. Krumko?
I just want to look at it in the context.
Okay, I was giving the, suggesting that you have an option, you could look into this and address it next time if you need more reason.
I'm just trying to answer the question.
This is the only meeting I'm going to be able to make, so I'm so, I'm so convinced you're comfortable.
It's a little deep. Okay. Oh, okay, that's a building setback, so what's our?
It's 271.
Okay, the ordinance reads that the building setback has to be.
Yes, ma'am.
The 200, 260 something, what's the?
It's 260.
Okay, so the residential is setback 260 something. I'm going to take a look at the commercial, the closest building to it. I had thought that you had done that properly. You have to do this and your dog is adorable, can you bring your desk up there?
break, all right? If you'd like to use the restroom, feel free. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene the hearing at this juncture. So we left it with this gentleman, Danny. Would you like to call a call, please, Danny?
Mr. Terrell?
Absent.
Mr. Brody?
Yeah.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Absent.
Mr. De Villia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Good?
Absent.
Mr. Close?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Absent.
Mr. Sienna?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Jim Burley?
Hearing.
And Mr. Burley, at the break, we had an opportunity to speak with, I don't want to be disrespectful, but Danny.
Dan, that's over.
Dan, to go over it. We thank him for pointing that out for whatever reason and we were all involved in it. I have no recollection, Jim had no recollection, our professionals didn't have a copy. The good news is, as can test, as can be testified to from Jeremy, we actually do need the 260 foot, so Jeremy, you want to?
That's correct. We do have at least 260 feet from residential uses to our north to our closest commercial building, which is the hotel.
Mr. Lang, would you be able to tell me about the buffer that will be from the brook to the back of the hotel?
So with the exception of the area immediately adjacent or north of the hotel, it'll actually be the existing woods in that area, because we're not, we're really minimizing disturbance along that area. We are supplementing that at more of a, like a pedestrian level with end row of evergreen trees, didn't throw about green trees. But the, so the overall buffer will be that mature woods that you're used to looking at. And that's one of the reasons, you may have heard the testimony earlier about the wall and lights, is why we went with those, so that they would be down low to the ground and would not, you know, be potentially as, you know, glare-producing as a poll.
We appreciate those. The issue we have over there is when you look at it in the winter, that all those trees are deciduous, so you look, you can look right through them. Past, I don't know how many feet it is, there is a tall, tall row of evergreen trees and I wanted to see if you guys were going to be keeping those because they have to be taller than the hotel. They're probably 80 to 90 foot trees, serve a great natural buffer and I didn't, I, you know, I didn't measure how far out they are, but they are, they are in a row out there and I just didn't know if anybody knew if they were standing or not.
We actually, we have a certified tree expert who, when we get through and one of the things that the board chairman asked me, I'm sorry, that the board attorney asked me to do and I'll, I think this is a nice time for me to do it, is just let you know who else we have, so then you'll know who to direct questions to. So after Mr. Lang, I have a traffic engineer who's going to offer traffic testimony. I have a certified tree expert who is going to testify to the report that we submitted as well as answer your questions with regard to trees such as that, such as that nature. And I also have the project architect who will talk about all of the architectural elements. So I would just ask that for that one, maybe we defer that to the addict one.
This, I'm, this is the only meeting I can make because of work. I work Monday through Thursday all the time.
Your wife, your wife now has your cellphone?
Yeah.
So by sending you that, I'm happy to send you that plan and if any questions that you have, I can give you the plans, give you the tree removal, give you all of that.
If you guys could lend some kind of consideration to that, I don't know how far the trees are.
Okay.
I don't, but they are, they are very, very large. For a four-story hotel, it'd be by the, by the residential area right now, I know, like you say 220 feet, 250 feet, 260 feet, that does, that sounds like a lot when you, when you talk about it, but when you look at most properties in Oakhurst are 100 feet wide. So when you stand and you look two and a half houses away, that's not very far. These are deciduous trees, evergreens, I know they're going to supplement them, that would be great. If we, you know, Mr. Lang, I don't know if you guys have any plan on how high you're going to supplement with these trees, the plantings you guys are going to plant. We've lived there for 15 years, we, you know, I researched what deer don't eat, I planted that and the deer eat it. You know, so I'm trying to see, you know, how we can just make sure that our homes are protected along Melville and all the other streets, Bellmore and all the other streets just north of the property.
I certainly understand your concerns and that is part of why we put the hotel on that location to buffer you from, you know, the more intense portions of it. The hotel obviously is static, you know, there's no activity in the back. It previously testified the, you know, the outdoor areas, the swimming pool, the, you know, sports court are all in front of the hotel, so there's nothing going on, there's only pedestrian access in the rear there. You know, there's no other outdoor activity at all. And in four stories, it will actually buffer you from the rest of the Bell and all the other restaurants and uses, retail, et cetera, on the site. So we are very sensitive to that, and if anything further we can do, we're sure.
If we could just look to keep those trees out of the distance, but if somebody could look to see, because they are very tall evergreens.
I'll, I'll confer with our tree expert, find out where they are and if we can, we serve them.
Thank you, Mr. Lang. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for bringing the existence of those trees to the board's attention.
And that ordinance.
And the ordinance as well, yes, it's even more important. Okay, next, anyone, well, I believe the individual with the hat was up there first, so if you would like to speak, feel free.
Hi, I'm Lana Leonard, I live on 1130 Intelligen Avenue. I just have a couple of questions. I would like to know, what is the environmental impact of all this?
That's a very broad question. Can you be an animalist specifically?
In terms of wildlife disruption, sound, what are the numbers? Is there a report? Is there something I can find?
There is an environmental impact statement that goes over in a, you know, consistent with the ordinance, the various types of impact land development has. I can tell you here that land, there is impact when there's land development, certainly there's an impact. We are staying outside of the freshwater weapon areas, the repairing zones, the flood hazard areas. We've designed the stormwater management to, you know, meet all those, meet and exceed really all those requirements. We focused our development to go around or maintain as many specimen trees as possible. This tree expert is going to give that testimony a lot more. We've concentrated the most intense portions of development up near the highway where the environmental quality is the lowest, you know, not only in terms of trees but also in terms of habitat, wildlife, et cetera. So, you know, I think we've really fit the development in and laid it out internally to be sensitive to the environment. The biggest environmental feature on the site is the Poplin and Burke corridor and that's why we're holding so far off the northernly property line. And again, you'd give credit to the governing body, that was something they recognized too, that's why they're, or part of why there are these buffers required from the northernly property line specifically, because that corridor, not only is that have some residential, residential community to our north, but the corridor itself is an environmental feature. So staying off of that and that's why you see that the whole project essentially shifted south.
Mr. Lang, to assist our neighbor in the packet.
Yeah, and I was just going to address that, Mr. Brown.
There's already, A5 is what we call the EIS.
No, but what I was going to suggest is, you'd have to, it's lengthy and you'd have to pay to copy it. If you leave your email address or you email me in the office, we'll gladly email you a copy of it for your review, so you don't have to pay to have a photocopy of the data.
But that is, I think, A5s?
I don't know. That is A5, yeah. So you want to just leave your email address to send your copy?
That'd be beautiful.
That was prepared in June 2018.
Okay, and what is the socioeconomic impact? I see that you're building upscale townhouses, so surely you drive people out of the surrounding neighborhoods. My concern is also building a hotel. There's a lot of hotels coming up, we have a lot of local hotels. So my concern is, I'm wondering, what do you think the socioeconomic impact would be with upscale townhouses and a hotel which brings in tourists?
I did not provide any testimony on socioeconomic impact. I will just say generally, I don't think building high-quality housing drives anybody else out of their home, so I'm not sure of that connection. Beyond that, you know, it wasn't part of my testimony.
Is there any look into that? I just think that, I feel that there will be an impact, given that it will drive the property margins up. So I'm curious where I could find this information or who would be willing to provide it, if that's possible.
We don't anticipate having a witness who did a socioeconomic impact study on developing the property consistent with the ordinance.
Do you think that's important? Do you, I'm generally, I really don't know. Do you think that's important? Do you, I'm generally, I really don't know. I feel like this is a concern. I'm wondering what you think.
It's not something that the municipal land use law allows us to consider as part of the grant of marriage or the grant of improvements, the fiscal impact, whether it be for the developer or the municipality, because really, the socioeconomic impact is more, if you're saying you're driving the property values up around you, that really goes to the tax base of the municipality. And there's case law out there that that's not something that the board can consider, the applicant can use to their favor.
Okay, I think that's unfortunate. I really do. Okay, that's all I have for now. I really thank you for the information. I will leave my email. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The lady in the red sweater, as you were standing there before, thank you.
Hi, I am Sheila Everhart, and I live at 17...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Foreign reporter can't hear you.
Oh. Okay. Is this better?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Sheila Everhart, and I live at 17 Overhill Road in Ocean.
Seventeen what? Could you?
Overhill Road.
Thank you.
Okay. My question is about the landscaping, and if this is not the person to ask, I hope that you can tell me who would be. But my question is, all the landscaping that you have pictured and discussed, a lot of it will need to be maintained. And my question is about who is responsible for maintaining it, and how can the town oversee that they do it properly? I'm hoping that this will be a priority, that we won't have chemical pesticides, chemical weed killers, and chemical fertilizers used in this town center.
You can address it to the extent that you can, and then I'll talk about the procedure as to the town's ability to oversee it.
So the maintenance would be divided essentially into two halves. You have the residential and commercial component. The commercial landlord would be ultimately responsible for maintenance of the overall commercial center. And then on the residential side, it would be some kind of homeowners association that would be responsible for the maintenance there. Certain aspects of the maintenance are very well spelled out and mandated. In terms of types of chemicals, things like this, the state is the entity that regulates most of that. So that would have any things, chemicals, things like this that would apply, would have to be in accordance with all applicable state regulations.
I'm sorry, I missed that last sentence.
So the state regulates the application of chemicals, pesticides, fertilizers, things like that. So all of that would have to be done in accordance with state rules.
So the state would come and inspect what they were doing? Would they test the water? Would they test for the runoff to see if it has been contaminated?
When you asked whether or not this was the witness to answer, he answered to the, he answered to the extent that he could. As to the future operation of the site, once this board approves it, that falls under the police power of the municipality and/or the state. It's, there's not much that this board can do. As far as the maintenance of the landscaping, that is part of what would be an approved site plan. So for example, for two years, a maintenance guarantee is posted to maintain it. And then after that, should the landscaping die or not be the same as what was approved, the municipality would have the ability to come in and say, you're in violation of your site plan, you need to replace this tree, or take care of that tree. So they do have the ability to enforce the landscaping to the extent that it talks about what is supposed to be there and the health of it. As to the maintenance of, meaning the use of pesticides, I don't know that the municipality has the ability to govern that. I'll defer to the board attorney, but...
Not generally speaking, you know, there are general police powers if there's a critical problem on a regular basis.
But since we are going to be, if this all goes through, we are going to be losing 3,000 or more trees. There's, there's migrating birds that come through. There's native birds, there's native plants that are going to be, I assume, at risk. And I think that if it's the town council's purview, then I would like assurances that they will be monitoring this, because it's, right now, we have become very aware about the importance of beneficial insects.
Mrs. Everhart?
Yep.
I'm sorry, but this has to just be questions right now.
Okay.
You'll have an opportunity to share your comments. And with regard to the specifics as to the trees, and the impact with regard to the trees, and the health of the trees that are existing, we have a certified tree expert that can answer those questions.
And the insects and the birds?
I am not going to have anybody testify as to the insects and the birds.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, the lady in the green scarf.
Hi, Monica Mazurczek, M-A-Z-U-R-C-Z-Y-K. I have a question.
Mrs. Mazurczek, just your address, I'm sorry.
Sure, 168 Locust Avenue, West Long Branch, 07764. To follow up with the previous questioner, will there be a bond posted that specifically relates only to landscaping maintenance?
As Mr. Croco indicated, the maintenance bond will be posted for a two-year period once the site is fully accepted as construction's complete. And just to be clear about that too, the township will, throughout the construction process, inspect everything and ensure everything is built to all the applicable, not only the plans and specifications.
Wait, wait, I just, I want to correct something you said, and you're likely aware. Mrs. Mazurczek, the bonding, the state statute for bonding requirements used to allow the towns to require a performance bond for all site improvements. Right. They've since changed it in recent history. It does still allow for the bonding for improved public improvements in public property and landscape buffers. So while it does, the state statute no longer provides for a bond, I think for the internal, and I guess, for the internal plantings, anything that's part of our landscape buffer will be bonded for a two-year period as required by the state law. I just want to clarify that, because I didn't want it to be misrepresented. So what I was trying to understand is, financially speaking, what amount of money, or what percentage of, I have no idea what amount bond we're talking about, but a cost-benefit analysis in terms of the landscaping that's being put in, and then it's only, really has to be maintained for two years, after which time...
If you heard my response to Mrs. Everhart earlier, it doesn't only have to be maintained for two years. Developers are required to post a bond for two years, but it has to be maintained in perpetuity. I believe at the last hearing, one of the board members, or even Sandy, had indicated that, once it's approved, if it's no longer in existence, the board or the town can come in and require that it be replaced.
So what I'm looking for is, what kind of teeth, financially speaking, would there be to ensure that the follow-up would be done?
There is none after two.
After two years, so that was, okay.
Unless a violation notice was issued, and you have to go to municipal court. And, you know, I mean, there are summonses, and there are, respectfully, I have clients who have gotten summonses for not maintaining their landscaping, and there isn't some teeth and an expense to comply, or else you're going to face fines.
Okay.
That's, that's correct.
Thank you. Another question. Do I understand correctly that in terms of environment, stormwater analysis, flood hazard analysis, the two-year, 10-year, and 100-year storms are what are, are used as studies, is that correct?
That's correct.
Two, 10, and 100. So...
I was just asking, it's a 25, sometimes you say 26.
So any floods or rainwater that occurred within the last two years are not part of that purview, correct?
I think I understand your question, but if I'm off-base in answering it this way, please let me know. When we say a two, 10, or 100-year storm, and those are really bad descriptors, actually, the industry's getting away from using those designations, what it really is, is how often it has a chance of occurring. So for instance, a 100-year storm, it's a storm event that has a statistical 1% chance occurring every year. So every year that a storm has a 1% chance of occurring. That actually changes over time, as rainfall records are produced, that can actually move. In fact, a few years ago, it significantly moved.
So it doesn't look back historically, meaning look at what the storms were in the last two years, it looks at it?
Exactly. It's a much larger record, they call it an epic, but it's a much larger record based on NOAA collected rain gauge data. So these are not actual storm events that adhere. They're actually synthetic storms, both in the total amount of rainfall and their distribution, that are gleaned from real storms. So it really has nothing to do with local events that haven't occurred in the area.
So my concern is, in what way, if any, was analysis done to take into account the 20, over 25% increase in rainfall that we had in last year alone? It was like 64.9 inches of rain statewide, so. And that's very unusual. I mean, when I brought it up with the DEP, they say they're, because of the studies that they're, that they have to use, obviously, a study has to be compiled over a period of time, so.
That's a amount of rainfall, but over the whole year. These systems are designed for peak events, so they can take multiple events. It's really the peak that where they would potentially fail. So if we're designing for a 100-year storm, it can take multiple 100-year storms. So even if there is more rain throughout the year, that's not going to cause these systems to fail, or in any way underperform, because they're based on peak rainfalls. It's not based on how often it is going to rain.
But I, I am concerned that even though it takes into account peak statistics, volume does matter, and cumulative amounts of rain that are not factored into analyses can certainly present a problem, as people along various roads in the area can testify, I'm sure.
And that, and I agree with you, the volume is an important issue. That's part of the state's move toward green infrastructure, is to address volume more holistically. And that's why this particular site design has been designed the way it has, to fully incorporate green infrastructure. I will note that in all of our routings to compete with the peak requirements, we are not counting the recharges of ground, infiltration of the ground. We ignore that entirely. So the actual performance of the system will actually far exceed what we have on paper, because we are ignoring that conservatively. And under the current state rules, that's why this is such a monumental change with the state, they, their guidance doesn't allow you to count it. It's not actually a rule, but just to be conservative, we don't count it. But that is also going to change, where you're going to start counting infiltration under the new rules.
I have other questions, but I want to let other people have a chance to ask theirs. Thank you for now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The gentleman in the plaid, were you next, sir?
Dennis Howlett. I live at 1630 Hallbrook Street. Howlett, H-O-W-L-E-T-T. I wanted to make a comment about some of the conversation that happened before.
Excuse me. We have to be technical about this, because comments per se have to be left for the end. So at this point, they're just questions of the expert.
Okay. You talked tonight about bike paths and potential of bike paths. I know some of the suggestions were made, and perhaps some of the existing infrastructure could accommodate that. I just like to say that I'm pretty sure that it is illegal for adults to ride bikes on sidewalks. So you'd have to keep that in mind going forward.
Yes, I understand that, and that's why I specifically referred, when I posed the question to the board, of converting the sidewalk to a multi-use path. It would be a different design standard, it would be designed as a sidewalk.
I understand. It wasn't clear that it was a conversion. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I know there are, there are some wetlands on the site, and that is correct?
Yes.
And in these wetlands, are there any fertile ponds among the wetlands?
I'm sorry, I couldn't...
Fertile ponds or pools?
None that we're aware of, no.
Okay. I'm concerned about the wetlands very much. Do you know if there's been an independently established baseline for the current state of the wetlands, so that in the future, it could be monitored to see whether your bio-retention plan and proposals are working sufficiently?
A letter of interpretation has been issued by the NJDEP, which confirms the mapping of the extent and the basis that went into that. So that, that's the extent to which there's a baseline study, that, that's what it is.
Okay. I don't know whether the board would like to insist upon a picture of the current health of the flora and fauna, so that going forward, we can see whether the proposed mitigations are working correctly. Does that make sense?
It does to an extent, a couple of things though. Just, with regard to the baseline, in addition to what Jeremy testified to, they not only have confirmed the extent of it with the line, but they've assigned a resource value, which indicates the buffer. Could you just take a moment and explain what that means? Because that, that really is their basis for the content of how valuable the wetlands are.
So there are three levels. There's ordinary, intermediate, and exceptional. In this case, we have intermediate resource value wetlands, so they have a 50-foot transition area. It's not that deep of an analysis, though, in terms of flora and fauna.
And as far as, we're not, as far as the wetlands are concerned, the board, the DEP has ultimate jurisdiction over them. So honestly, any imposition of any maintenance and/or record-keeping as a release, that really would be through the DEP. It wouldn't be something that this board could do, it would be something that the DEP would have to do. So I know that, I've seen letters from other members of the public, the DEP, if that's a concern, I suggest that you write to them and ask them to monitor the health of the wetlands.
Better than coming from someone in the public, I think, would be better, or came from someone on the planning board or the town council, so.
Certainly, they're welcome to write a letter to the DEP.
One thing I could add, the piece of the wetlands that is most, you know, subject to potentially being affected by the development is this finger that comes into the site. We have surrounded it. You can't see it here, but there's porous pavement, there's underground infiltration. This is a bio-retention basin, this is another bio-retention basin, extended detention, underground infiltration. So we've put essentially like a shield around these wetlands that feed the groundwater, the shallow groundwater, so that there's a continuous flow of shallow groundwater into that wetland area to maintain hydrology. So we are aware of that. DEP is very aware of that. In fact, I had that specific conversation with one of the DEP reviewers not too long ago. So we are doing everything we believe we can to try to maintain the health of that wetland system.
And just so I understand, and Mr. Dill, if this is the question you're asking, so that is to actually continue feeding water into the wetlands purposefully, so they don't dry up?
Exactly. One of the danger, one of the negative effects of the green infrastructure approach would be, everything would be going through a pipe. And then from a stability perspective, we don't want to put the pipe at the top here, so it'll tend to erode out that wetland. So the pipe would then bypass the wetland, discharge down here, but then that wetland would become starved of water. So the answer to that is green infrastructure. Where you're using the pipe for those big storms, like, you know, the wetland doesn't need the 100-year storm. It's looking for that, you know, that regular, everyday rainfall, that normal, the one that doesn't make the news. That's the rainfall that the wetlands live on. And that water is going to go into the ground in the variety of stormwater management systems I just talked about, and be primarily shallow groundwater flow, follow morrow of the ground, and then seep out as this wetland, the topography kind of dips down gently in here, you know, it'll just seep out, or it may not even daylight, it may just stay very shallow in the root zone, but it'll feed that wetland.
Regarding the bio-retention system that you're putting in, is there a specific part of one of those basins that is dedicated to the runoff from the proposed gas station?
The, the gas station here? This has, I can go, will we go back?
We've just gone back to the slide that shows the gas station.
So this is the gas station area here, so you can see we've got the bio-retention system and the yard system here out front. So that's the portion that's going to take this parking lot. So we'll go through the bio-retention, and then down to the larger storm events, we feed it to these chambers, where it'll be stored and infiltrated, and then exonerated.
So it's a distinct basin just for the gas station?
Yeah, Troy, it is serving the gas station area, yes.
Let me tell you why I'm asking that, because I'm curious as to whether these basins are interconnected, and no matter how well people design things, sooner or later, there's going to be a mishap. And if there's a spill, it would be nice if a single basin were the one that was in charge of that spill, so it can be segregated in one spot.
There are tremendous amount of safety requirements in the state regulations. Wawa does it extremely well, but so do many other providers. So there are, there are a lot of systems in place to either avoid a spill in the first place, if it does happen, quickly arrest it, and then there's onsite both training and materiel to deal with the spill. So to me, if any kind of a spill has gotten to a basin, there's already been a failure somewhere.
Right.
So the, these spills are really contained before they even get to the basins.
I believe that. The reason I'm asking that is there are 29 or so contaminated sites here in Ocean Township already, and 11 of those are gas stations. I certainly hope Wawa doesn't become the 12th.
I believe that in your experience, those gas station spills were not of current vintage or technology.
This is true, I realize that.
Everything has changed since then.
And that's why the rules are so extensive as they are, because there has been a history of failure. So that has driven the rules now to be very prescriptive, and there's quite a few safeties, alarm sensors, it's actually fairly sophisticated in how these systems are monitored.
Are the basins interlocked or are they independent each of each other?
Some of them are interconnected. And then this one is one of them, this is interconnected.
The water and rainwater that comes off the roofs and all of the impervious ground area now, that's going to have some degree of pollution. I mean, it's just not regular, pure rainwater. Is that a fair statement?
Well, even rainwater, particularly in New Jersey, is not pure itself, it's picking up air pollutants in the air.
More, less impure than the regular rainwater?
So yes, rainwater runoff needs stormwater mitigation, so we are providing that, and these bio-retention systems, for instance, are very effective at pollutant removal, because not only is it providing that sand filter, you heard Mr. Sterling talk about earlier, but vegetation itself, through biological processes, can actually help not only to hold it, but then actually consume it, or for instance, nutrients. Nitrogen, for instance, would be very well taken up by bio-retention, so...
I understand that. In fact, I was at your last presentation, and you had to make the comment of how good it is to have trees in the basins, because they do so well in retaining water, which is kind of an ironic comment, but it was worth making. And the reason I'm asking that is because the number of trees and things that are coming down, the trees that would normally retain water, hold water, the biomass underneath them that would hold water, the evaporation that would normally go off, now you have to accommodate all that extra water and do something with it. And there's only three ways I can think of, water's going to go someplace. You're going to put it in your bio-retention, and it's going to run off to the surrounding areas, because there's actually going to be more water you have to accommodate now than was happening naturally. Or it's going to go through to the storm sewers, and whatever piping there might be all the way to Deal Lake, which is also a water supply. And I'm concerned about particularly the runoff that may happen to the local neighborhoods, I am, live very close to it. The runoff, the water that's going to go down through the basin into the aquifer, this is the same aquifer that even Kepwell Springs uses, and there are a number of irrigation wells, and a number of still drinking water wells in town, and I'm concerned that this water is not going to be as good as it was before. And even, there's one more thing, with sump pumps working all the time now, a lot of people use the sump, not a lot, some people use the sump pumps to irrigate their lawn. So I'm worried about the quality of water that's going to emanate from this site.
Mr. Dill, I think you meant to put a question mark at the end of that, and say...
Indeed, I did.
Is that... So I think, if I may reframe it in a question, is there going to be a negative impact as it relates to the aquifers or runoff to the neighborhoods of... Is that what Mr. Dill?
Well, the water's going to be used, I was actually asking Mr. Lang, whether there is going to be more water that has to be accommodated after this development than there was through the natural state.
The answer is yes. Development, land development does increase the amount of stormwater volume, we're very aware of that, and that is why, even though green infrastructure is not yet required by the state, this site has been designed with green infrastructure, because it is far better at retaining water, or water retention, than traditional gray infrastructure. So while, yes, there's a net increase in stormwater volume, we are maximizing, we're at the leading edge, not the fleeting edge, of stormwater best management practices in terms of volume control, volume retention.
And by the state regulations, we're required to make sure that our post-development is equal or better than what is existing there today naturally, as it relates to the volume and the concentration of runoff, correct?
Not really. We're required to not exceed peak runoff rates, but in terms of volume, there's actually, the only volume standard in the current rules is the recharge, annual recharge requirement. That's not a peak event, that's not a flooding event, that's more, that's consistent with the conversation we had before about maintaining the wetlands, that annual groundwater recharge, that's what keeps things like those wetlands, but they're having a good vitality. So we're going beyond that here, we're not just meeting the groundwater recharge requirement, we're actually providing significantly more retention than that. But it is not possible to fully retain all of the volume differential. So the state mandate is then, not to just meet existing runoff rates, but actually to dial it back. So for the two-year storm, you can only meet 50% of the existing peak rate, for the 10-year, it's 75%, for the 100-year, it's 80%. So essentially, what that is happening with that volume, it's being held back and released out very slowly over time.
Could you just explain to the gentleman, I think, recharge requirement, what it is, so that they understand?
So they, recharge requirement, you said average annualized rainfall, and you have to basically recharge, I think it's 90%, is that the right, 90% of that over the course of the year? Now, most of those storms, that 90 percentile is just small, everyday rainstorms, these are not storms that make the news, but that's where the bulk of the water. Another young woman earlier had said how there's more, about 25% more rainfall last year, and there was a significant uptick in the state. We had a lot more total rainfall than we have had in a while. So that additional rainfall is getting recharged into the ground, and we've actually seen in New Jersey, the groundwater aquifers are actually recovering. There was a time, it's actually kind of silly now, but the state actually had even started a drought management process, which, you know, in hindsight, seems kind of silly, but there was a time when aquifers were actually pretty low, and there was real concern that, like similar to California's water problems, that we could have a problem here. That's essentially, I'll be funny about it, evaporated, because we've gotten, you know, so much rainfall now over the last several years, but particularly last year.
Thank you.
I'll go to my right here, is there any waiting?
Yeah, Olga Hanout, 26 Meadows Lane, Wayside. I've been a resident of H-A-N-N-O-U-T. And I've been a resident of Wayside for 28 years, I'm a Realtor. And I have a question in reference to your testimony. You indicated that Wawa does the parking lot adjacent to the building of concrete because of the very, very heavy traffic. Do you know, on a daily basis, how many thousands of patrons visit a Wawa convenience store?
We have a traffic engineer that will do all the trip generation analysis testimony, so I think it would be better, that question would be better answered by that expert.
And also, just, I just want to clarify, when you talked about the traffic, I think it was with regard to the pedestrian traffic and the turnover, the number of turnover, not the actual number of vehicles, generally speaking, it was as to the landscaping being trampled by pedestrians?
It was by pedestrians, but also, to her point, was the cars parked.
Right, the turnover.
Right, the turnover, that people are, just by its nature, obviously, people are coming and going, you go to the food store, you're there for an hour, you go into a Wawa type of store, you're not there for an hour, you're there for 10 minutes, whatever it is.
But as far as the total number, the traffic engineer can speak to that.
Correct. So that number, I would like to know, how many thousands of patrons visit a Wawa convenience store on a daily basis?
And one thing to understand, too, and the traffic engineer will get into this a lot more, these are what we generally call pass-by trips. Most people are, and there are trips that are dedicated to just going to Wawa, but most people are already on the road, they're just stopping at Wawa to and from, whether it's work or, you know, some other destination.
But let's not get into traffic testimony, we have the traffic in here.
Okay, another thing, you said that the poster child of a desirable neighborhood, that's how you state, was, or transition from residential, and you pointed out what is right now on Deal Road, the museum, the library, and then commercial, a building, a gas station, a hotel, and other residential construction. From my perspective of, as a Realtor, if I'm trying to have, if I'm with a family, a desirable neighborhood, and in your opinion, since you testified, will be better? Right now, we have the municipal offices, then we have residential, then we have the shore, some other residential, then Walpon Road, the park, Palaya Park, the museum, and then the library. Will be more desirable of a neighborhood have open space or a gas station right there?
I think on Route 35 corridor, I think it makes a lot more sense to have the gas station right there. I would not want to put the gas station, you know, on Walpon, let's say the traffic signal at Walpon. Would the gas station make sense there? No, I don't think it would make sense there, because then you'd have people converting off the main traffic corridor into the center, really, of that residential area to access gas. I think it's much more, from a planning perspective, much better placed right on Route 35. So from a planning perspective, I think it's exactly where it belongs.
No, no, I think I was not, I was not clear. I was just saying what is in right now on Deal Road. I start from the police station, residential, Walpon Road, on the shore, some residential, Walpon Road, then the park, Palaya Park, the museum, the library, and open space. You say it's a poster child of a desirable neighborhood to transition into commercial, have the gas station and the hotel. Will be a more desirable neighborhood to have open space, rather than have a Wawa gas station, a hotel, and residential, new construction?
When I was referring to poster child, I was talking about land planning. And you've given the one bookend on the municipal building, and that's actually a good example, where you've got, the municipal building, for instance, is more transitionally used than you get into residential, religious, than into open space, but then it kind of picks back up again, and begins with the museum, the library, now it would be our residential, and then the restaurants, and the hotel, and then the more intense uses. So it's a spectrum. And as you get near that arterial roadway, Route 35, it makes sense for those uses to become more intense. So I'm saying from a land planning perspective, that is really the idea of land planning, is to put those intense uses right on the arterial corridor. So that's what I, when I said it was a poster child word, that's what I'm referring to, is putting the intense uses right on the corridor, and then as you get more distal from the corridor, the uses get less and less intense, and that's exactly what is proposed here.
Okay, another question, one of the neighbors, the prior neighbor, I don't think she's still here, oh, she's still here, regarding the displacement of certain, certain families due to the cost of the new residential units. As a Realtor, I can tell you that it's very hard to find for families, to accommodate them in the mid-300s. They are going to takedown force, to force chase, moving out of Ocean Township when they are renting in Ocean Township, because they can't afford, the only options we have right now is the manor, cots wall, and even...
Mr. Dill, I just, I have to, I apologize, but I have to just put an objection on the record. She's offering testimony with regard to the affordability of housing in Ocean Township, and we've already provided the answer that we didn't look at the socioeconomic, we're not allowed to, and we're not addressing, he didn't address that in his testimony. So in the public portion, if you want to make a comment as a Realtor, as a resident, as to what your opinion is, then that's your opportunity to do it, but at this point, it's really just questions as to what he testified to.
Okay, so my question will be, are you going to offer, in the new units that you are building, a percentage of more affordable units, or they are all going to be the same price units?
He didn't testify to that, but I will answer that, because that's really a legal question. The answer is no, we're not having any onsite affordable units. Under the New Jersey Fair Housing Act, and under the ordinance as it is adopted in Ocean Township, this is not inclusionary zone. So it's only in inclusionary zones where you have to set aside to build the low-cost, de-restricted housing in that neighborhood. That isn't part of what's in the zoning here, or what's required. What we are going to do, what we're required to do, is pay 2.5% per assess value for the commercial, as that's the state statute requires, that 2.5% of the assess value is for the commercial. And then I don't know off the top of my head what their Ocean Township ordinance requirement is for residential. So built into any development in Ocean Township, you have to make a percentage payment to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of the state, and that goes towards providing low-cost housing. Whether or not they provide in Ocean Township, I don't know, but we're not proposing to set aside as part of this development.
Fine. The prior resident, he had a question about the bike path, and that's very important. I used to, normally, the kids, the residents, they go through Allen Avenue in order to cross to...
Man, could you kindly ask questions at this point?
Okay. What is, can you give us a concrete answer of what is going to be the bicycle path crossing from the west side of 35 onto Deal Road to cross to the east side?
We can, we stipulated previously that we're going to work with the board engineer and the board planner to develop, to the extent that we can, integrating bike paths into our development. We can't put bike paths on Route 35 or crossing, we don't own the land on the west side of 35, we're not doing anything there. What we can do is incorporate it to the extent that it's feasible on our property, and that's what we're going to work with the board engineer to do.
Yeah, one more thing, the bus shelter, I wasn't clear when you were pointing out at the graphic, where is going to be the bus shelter? Because I always see when I'm driving, men, women, and children waiting on the bus stops.
Is it the bus shelter, the DEP?
Well, we are going to be required to relocate it.
Yeah, it's going to be relocated, so we need to know exactly where it's going to be relocated.
And it's shown on the plans, exactly where it's going to be relocated. And it's essentially moving north, the slide I have up here, 18, right here at the bottom in the center graphic, that's the Jug Handle ramp, you can just see the edge of the bus shelter here, and so it's being moved north from its current location, simply north on 35, and then we're actually extending a sidewalk from within the site, orientated toward the convenience store to connect to that as well. So you'll, you'll have connectivity to the bus shelter, both directly along 35, as you do now, although we're extending the sidewalk up 35, and then also directly into the development.
Thank you.
I need a second one, okay?
Hi, my name is Michelle Crossa, 1318 Lena Ave.
Could you just say your last name? Could you just say your last name?
C.R.O.S.T.A. So, Mr. Lang, I was wondering, when, when the weather turns nice and you're sitting outside at a restaurant, do you enjoy the smell of gasoline in the air while you're eating your food?
I don't know what his, I have to object, his, his personal feeling on...
I'm curious, I'm curious.
I know, but he's here as an expert witness, not what his personal feelings are.
So, I'm going to get into my question, but I need a little background here, there was an article from 2018, scientists at Columbia and Johns Hopkins University that state people living or working near gas stations are exposed to far higher levels of toxic fumes than previously.
Mr. Chair, I have to object, if she's going to reference anything that's outside of the record, it would have to be admitted.
You can say these comments to the editor.
But it's leading into a question.
But you should just ask the question, please.
I think we need a little bit of the background in order to get to the question.
Well, you can ask the question anyway, thank you.
So, there's about 10 times more benzene that is being emitted than previously recorded, which is a toxic chemical.
Sorry, you can ask the question, please.
I'm getting to it, to be known as a carcinogen, are you worried about the people that are living in those townhomes near the gas station being exposed to this toxic chemical?
I didn't testify as to chemicals, carcinogens, or...
It has to do with the gas station, we're talking about a gas station here, you're putting townhomes next to a gas station.
I believe his answer is that he didn't testify to it, and he doesn't feel like he can comment on it, so...
No, I'm not an expert in benzene or carcinogens.
So, are we going to have a study based on the toxic fumes that come out of having the gas station there on the property, and what the health effects are to the people that are working, eating at restaurants next to the gas station, and the people that are living next to a gas station?
The question is no, we're not planning on presenting that testimony.
So, I think in terms of offering more information for people that are going to buy those townhomes, for people that are going to sit down and eat at the restaurant, it would be nice to have a health study that we can reference before this goes in?
Again, the application is being, we're putting forth our application under the municipal land use law and the surrounding regulations, if as an objector, you want the board to consider a study, then when the public portion, you'll have the ability to submit whatever document that is, move it into evidence, but, you know, it would have to be reviewed first by the applicant as well, so you have the ability to put in whatever evidence you want at the end, but we're presenting our case, and based on the conclusion of our case, if the board, the board then renders a decision, it is not our plan to put forth any health studies as to the impacts of gas stations.
No, I stand up, definitely against, so, I just want to know why, why we're, and I guess, I don't know if this goes for this, this or the next, but you talk about green infrastructure, and you talk about ways that we can build more sustainably, but having a gas station, we're not moving in the right direction, we're, it's, I think it's just, I want to get to the point where we should be having, like Mr. Doocy said, we should be having charging stations, we shouldn't be having a gas station, and I'll figure out one question later.
Thank you, the young lady there in the black that was waiting in place.
Mr. Chair, I'm trying very hard to limit my objections, because I, I want the public to have the opportunity, but it appears that there's a very blurred line between questions and comments, so perhaps for safety purposes, we could have everyone who comes up to ask a question this morning, so in the, in the event it goes into testimony like the last witness did, at least it will be sworn for the record.
If you like. Yes, we can do that, and just for the benefit of the public, it is certainly difficult for people who aren't at planning board meetings every month to distinguish between heartfelt questions and making comments, so what Ms. Crimco is asking is if everybody can be sworn, and that's certainly something that is done sometimes when the line is blurred, and suggests there's no problem in that, and probably a lot of people who are asking questions will, in the end, be making comments, so we'll cut that, so, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to, we'll start with this young lady, would you raise your right hand, please, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And again, if you're just going to ask questions, it's not necessary.
Then it'll, then it'll hold until the end, because they're pointed questions.
So, I'm Sharon Gregory, G.R.E.G.O.R.Y., I'm at 3 Glenview Drive in Ocean Wayside. Okay, so my first question, which I think might follow up with hers, just to put it as a question about an ordinance, is there an ordinance that has to do with the distance that a gas station has to be from a residential area, if that's something, you know, that you, on the planning, that you have to make sure there's a distance?
If you give us a moment to just take a look at the ordinance that governs this particular site, I think you can give a better answer.
And while you're looking, there might be right in the same area, if there's a distance between a place where people eat, a restaurant, however they would put it, versus the gas station, if there's also a separate distance?
I'll, I'll take them in the backwards order, so it's, in terms of the restaurant, no, there's no requirement from eating to gas station, in terms of the C7 ordinance, there's only setback requirements from 35, there's not specific to the gas station, there are requirements for buffering from the residential to the commercial holistically, but not specific to the gas station.
And that's the 260 that was offered before?
Well...
What's for the north property?
That's the north property line, but internal to the development, there's a 50-foot buffer requirement between the commercial and the residential, but the gas station is significantly further than that, as I've previously testified, we've located that right on Route 35, where we believe it belongs.
Okay, and another, going back to the beginning of your testimony, you had stated that you were looking to get a variance for the distance of the jug handle, that you said that's where the bus stop, there would be a separate pathway, and you thought that that would actually be better lit or something, but if you could go back to exactly why you would need a shorter distance between that jug handle and the next walkway where the bus is, I don't remember the exact amount, but it was something like 175 versus 150 or something deep from the jug handle.
I think she was talking, I, I think you're talking about the variance for the buffer from the street on the front, and we have it everywhere, but we don't have it along those two spots in the jug handle.
Correct, so I wanted to know why we couldn't have the ordinance amount of space in between the jug handle, where people can be driving, from where there could be pedestrians walking and texting, or, you know, some other danger, why would you need a variance to make that a shorter distance?
That isn't what the variance is for, the variance is for the buffer, meaning the distance from, not where a sidewalk goes, because a sidewalk would go along in the right of way, the variance is for the buffer, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, from the roadway to where our development starts, meaning the parking areas, so it has nothing to do with...
It's from the property line, not even the roadway, the property line that defines the edge of the site, which, and there may be an additional distance, there is an additional distance from the property line to the roadway, that's within the right of way, so it's a distance from the property line, in this case, to the parking lot, I mean, the purpose of the ordinance is primarily aesthetic, he did give testimony as to why he felt from an aesthetic standpoint it's appropriate.
Right, and Ms. Gregory, just a second, it has nothing to do with the safety of pedestrians or where the sidewalk would go, that's what first.
Well, not the sidewalk, but where the parking lot is, people walk around the parking lot, especially teenagers, so the texting, jumping in and out of the cars, to me, I would want, if I'm driving on that jug handle, the maximum distance that could be allowed between the roadway and where anyone could be standing, or falling around and falling into the way, so I don't run them over, you know, it's just logical safety to me.
Well, you're not going to fall into the roadway, there'd be greater dangers around the sidewalk, and sidewalks are parallel to the roadways, and here, they're, just like in most places in New Jersey, there'll be a sidewalk right on Route 35, so that would be, you know, that's a situation, in terms of the parking itself, for the convenience store, this is, would be the closest parking to the jug handle, but we do have the bio-retention base intervening between the two.
So, there's no walking?
So, there's no walking there, if you're walking from the convenience store to Route 35, at the end of the day, you have to be paying attention to where you're going, you know, otherwise you wouldn't notice stop before you got to the edge of Route 35, you'd walk out to the roadway, it's just, it's set up for safe and efficient circulation, but at the end of the day, you know, the pedestrians and the motorists have to follow the rules and frankly, apply common sense.
I understand that, but in that area where you're showing me, where it goes out to Route 35, where the jug handle is, you're talking about having the bus station where people could be standing, how close?
The bus station would be just as close as it is now to the roadway, we're simply shifting it north.
No, I'm asking to the jug handle, can you just show me the distance from the jug handle to the bus stop?
It's, it's right here, is this the, I can't measure with this, but that's the offset.
And then that walkway that you were just saying, maybe from the Wawa to toward Route 35 or toward the bus stop, you said there would be a walkway there?
It's right under that dotted line.
Yeah.
See the dotted line?
And what's the distance on feet?
On what?
How many feet is that distance, please?
Which distance you're referring to, confused?
I believe you said that's a walkway from Wawa parking lot to the bus stop?
So, you would know the length of the walkway?
No, the distance from the walkway to the jug handle. So, it's just barely like two feet taller than a six-foot person, that if they fell over, their head could be in the jug handle?
To put in perspective, the typical separation between sidewalk and roadway is four feet, so it'd be about twice the typical setback.
So, I didn't know if there was...
And there's also a guide rail around the outer edge of the jug handle, in between the sidewalk and the, and the jug handle ramp.
Good, thank you, that's good to know, and the last question was just, while you were requesting that variance, and you said that was just about aesthetics, a variance to the ordinance that you had mentioned at the beginning of his...
I think what Jim had, Mr. Higgins, the planner, had indicated that that provision, the purpose of it was for aesthetics to provide a buffer between the roadway and the development.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I am confused which one was it first, I think you would, thank you. Raise your right hand, please, do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thanks.
My name is Mary Williams, my address is 2 James Drive, I'll say, okay, I have three pre-basis questions, my first question is about the Wawa side on Deal Road, I was here when you read about the New Jersey regulations, so it's basically just a yes/no question, is it mandatory to have it on Deal Road?
No.
Okay, that's my first question, so does not have to be on Deal Road?
No, right, that's what I said, that they don't mandate it, it just goes with the intent of alerting the public as to the pricing.
True.
Any roadways, but it's not mandatory.
Right, so having it on Route 35, which is a main thoroughfare, would be sufficient. Okay, my second question is...
It's not sufficient for the applicant, but it's not required by law.
Right, by law, correct, okay, my second question is about that jug handle area, I attended a meeting last year, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought there was also a turn to go on, from Deal Road onto 35 North.
I'm glad you brought that up, the traffic expert will testify as to why that's not being shown here, and the result of the conversations with the DOT, Mr. Lang wasn't at those meetings.
That was one of the things in my report, which we dealt with later on in the hearing process, but I felt that they should explain why that's not being provided, I know the reasons, but I think, I think the general public that's here that's interested needs to know those reasons.
Very much so, yes, it's definitely a concern, the whole jug handle area is a concern, my next question is, so we'll hold off on that one, okay, my next question is, where those no trespassing signs are, like just basically, on your site, there are lots of trees that have been numbered, it seems like, from what I've seen, is that usually red marks means going to be, okay, so my question is, the trees that have been numbered, some of them are white, some of them are red, can you give me some information about that, or not at this time?
The certified tree expert who did the numbering will testify, and the numbering, I can just let you know, so you can think about it before he comes up, to, I don't know the distinction between the white and red, he'll answer, but the numbering was to identify them for purposes of his report, which was submitted.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, I have a lady at the microphone to my right, should raise your right hand, please.
I'm just being asking questions, but, sorry, darling.
Okay, if you promise.
The journal's in the background, I know the difference. My name is Joan Schnorvis, S.C.H.N.O.R.V., 14 Joda Road, West Almondhurst, okay, I have a question about a slide you had up before showing the setbacks.
Mr. Schnortis from, from what?
Schnortis from...
Schnorman.
Pardon?
Which setbacks from what?
Oh, when you were showing the setbacks, the gentleman that was asking about setbacks from...
From the hotel?
Yeah.
Okay.
The hotel.
Over on the slide.
That one, no, it had on the bottom, I was curious about the bottom, because it talked about flooding, and some information about flooding on the bottom. That, that's the...
Floor?
Yes, that one, the maximum...
Floor.
Oh, floor area, I'm sorry, I thought it said flood area, so required is 35,000 square feet, and proposed is 5,400, so what does that mean exactly?
So, this is a determination as to whether or not we're meeting the ordinance requirements, and the ordinance caps the commercial development at 35,000 square feet, and our proposal will comply, because we're under that, that cap.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, just, that's a little bit misleading on the display, because it says required, but it's really the minimum, it's the maximum that's permitted, it's not what's required, it's the maximum permitted, you're under that maximum.
All right, so all of those things would fall under that.
Some of them are, some of them are minimums, and some of them are maximums.
And the left column on that table says max or min, just to help follow along, you'll see in that most left column, it says either max or min, that way you'll know which it is.
Okay, so then the Route 35, the fast food, and, and first store, is that store, retail, the ST?
Oh, it's one story, actually.
Oh, one story, okay, so you're proposing more than what is the maximum that's required in that case?
Yes.
And also on the...
Well, that's no minimum, more than what the minimum required is in that case.
Where the, oh, the minimum required?
Yes, it's fully conform, everything that is here is fully conform.
It's fully conforming, no variances for any of that?
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chalvin in the swearing.
Rick Pogwist, 1308 Bunnahav, it's P.O.G.W.I.S.T.
I missed it completely, sir, I'm sorry.
I have to swear in?
No, 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 I missed your last name.
Oh, Pogwist, P.O.G.W.I.S.T.
Ms. Crimco, would you like to go back to the swearing?
Listen, if, if witnesses are convinced that they're just going to ask questions, they obviously don't need to be sworn in, it was a flurry of witnesses who offered quite a few statements, so I think it's safer to swear everybody in.
Mr. Pogwist, are you going to confine your, your, just the questions?
Just the questions, yeah.
Proceed.
My question is that if we have to swear, do they have to swear? You're the experts.
The experts were sworn in.
It was, okay, I'd miss it.
And they will be.
So, either way, good evening to the board, to everyone in attendance, two, two gentle comments, it is called a... Two gentle comments, it is cold in here.
What about the questions, sir? Would you raise your right hand, please? Do you promise to tell the, would you raise your right hand, please? You've already, you have flunked a test. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth off you got?
I do.
Thank you. And please try to restrict your questions.
Just two gentle comments for the... Is it cold in here? Are we going to be closing the school?
Please try to ask just a question.
I think he's trying to make a point of order, not make a comment. I think his point of order is that it's too cold. Yeah, it is.
Oh, okay.
Is it?
We'd like to ask our administrator here to explain that.
We have tried to contact the school and they're trying to remotely warm it up. We have no controls on the temperature.
Anybody HVAC expert here? Computer?
Way to get people, please keep it cold enough. Either way, for those that weren't here last week, can we play the movie, the video, just to rendition that to people that weren't here? Because I want to comment on that and ask questions.
You can.
I mean, is it possible to do that? Just, not the whole movie, but just an excerpt of it.
Which excerpts, sir?
It could start from the beginning, it doesn't matter. Is that possible?
Yeah, it's possible.
Okay. I just want to get a feel, for the people to get a feel for what my question is going to be.
You gotta give us a question, you gotta give us a moment.
This also serves as a break for everyone.
Yeah, Ms. Krymko has...
He's going.
Oh, he's got it?
Okay, so as everyone can see...
I just hit stop on this.
The amount of traffic is very, very light.
This is not a representation of...
Exactly, exactly. It is misleading, misrepresentating, and unrealistic.
Got a question, sir?
It is a comment on the video. My question is, well, can this be, having traffic study being conducted, can this be made to represent the traffic study, to make it more realistic? That's my question.
I, my answer is I don't know, but the architect whose company prepared this will testify, you can ask him that question.
Okay, well, it's saying that I feel it's misleading, misrepresented, and basically not a true traffic fan.
In fairness, since you turned this into a comment, I'd just like to stipulate for the record, the intention of this video is a promotional video to show the size, scale, the buildings, the colors, the layout, the landscaping. There was no intention for this to reflect rush hour or midnight or Fourth of July weekend or the like. So this is not a representation of traffic at all. But honestly, I think the best thing we could do then is to remove all of the cars from it and just show the property.
My worry is that it's going to influence the board and the public to basically influence them to show a more unrealistic setting.
Again, for the board and for the record, this is not to show, this isn't showing the birds flying around. We're not trying to show that no birds exist, we know that they do.
Mr. Pogwist?
There's also probably...
I've lived in this town for quite a while. I'm well aware of what the traffic looks like on Route 35 and I'm not going to be drawn in by that.
I just feel it would be more representative if the traffic study reflected in the video. It would be more honest to show that.
Your comments are noted.
Okay, can that be done?
Can it physically be done? I imagine it could be. Will it be done?
Okay, okay.
Another question.
My comment is, well, to me, for the record, I feel it's developer propaganda.
Excuse me, you really have to try to ask questions. Save your comments for the appropriate time, which is later.
Okay. Is the, we talked about the gas station and the residential. My question is, are there any other, this may be for the board or for our...
No, your questions at this time have to be directed to the witness, not to the board.
So has Steve, Mr. Lang, have you taken any look at, in general, in town, where residential and gas stations are positioned in a general, broad way to compare that with what we have represented here?
I'm not going to say I specifically studied Ocean Township, but having done a lot of land development work for the last almost 25 years now, it is very normal for a gas station to be located on a multi-lane, six, you know, like this Route 35 here, a six-lane highway. So this would be a very typical location for a gas station.
Okay, typical for existing, but for new?
Typical for new. Gas station operators like this want high-traffic volume areas. So they want to be on major state artillery rooms.
Not, that's not the question. In comparison to, relationship to residential, do you see a lot of residential being built by, in the same complex, next to a gas station like this?
It's not on the gas station site. This could be just as easily two separate applications. We could have done the subdivision and had two separate applications come in and then it wouldn't be on the same site. It's really more about the proximity. I've done extensive testimony already on the layout, how we went really from the park. It really goes from the open space in the park, then within the park, to the museum, the library, then to the residential, then to our restaurant, retail uses, and then finally out to the gas station and the quick-service restaurants, so...
Typically, new development that you work all throughout the state, is the proximity of this residential typical to that of gas stations that you're seeing?
Absolutely. And in other, actually, in other parts of the states, residential is often closer to gas stations than this. But this is certainly a typical or normal setback. There's something unusual in this site in terms of the proximity of residential to the retail gas.
Thank you, but that's typical of what's already existing. But I'm trying to establish, is it something...
I asked him about development.
So this is typical of new development?
Yes.
Even though they, as we've stated, benzene is a known human carcinogen?
Sir, the question was a typical and his answer was yes.
Okay, okay, very good. The other question or general comment is, the meeting is going to 11 tonight or 12?
Well, that's actually a good question.
Thank you.
You know, it is an excellent question. So looking at the clock, it's a few minutes before 10. And the chairman did indicate in the very beginning that it's possible to go until midnight. I don't think that's a good idea. Let me ask the applicant if we can at least restrict testimony no later than 11 and maybe even earlier?
Certainly, the affirmative testimony won't go past 11. When we finish up with Jeremy, we'll put the traffic expert on and he can begin his testimony. Whether, how much you control when questions are asked, I'll refer to the board. But yes, we can agree that his affirmative testimony won't go past 11.
Mr. Chairman, I think it would be beneficial for everybody here to make a determination right now as to how long we will go tonight. It's obvious that this application will not be done tonight. I'll be going to meet sometime in the near future. So what do you suggest, Mr. Chairman? Would you mean stop the entire hearing?
Why don't we say 11 o'clock?
Why don't we say 10:30?
All right.
I say 11. Give the applicant a chance.
Right, I mean, the applicant's paying for a special meeting and the settlement and everything else would like...
Plus, we still have questions to take. I don't know when you're going to be able to start your next question.
All right, so is the chairman's decision on behalf of the board that we will stop any testimony, any questions at 11 o'clock tonight? And are we going to have any more breaks tonight?
No.
Unless somebody on my board cries a break, you have to be humane.
That's the answer to your question, sir.
There were no breaks.
Very good, thank you. That's because some people need to get up very early and too late, thank you.
Mr. Pogwist, do you have any more questions or are you done?
I'll do it, thank you. I'll save you for when the experts talk.
Okay. Ms. Sharp?
Yes? My name is Karen Sharp. I live on Sunset Avenue in Long Masa. And my questions are regarding the stormwater management systems on the property. I understand there are quite a few different and related systems. And by my count, I think it was approximately 14. Is that correct?
Depends which systems we're counting, but yes, certainly never over 14.
It's total, counting all of them. I know there are a variety of different ones. And are all of these man-made systems? I know you talk about green systems and green development, but these are all basically man-made engineered systems. Is that correct?
Of course.
Of course, yes. And the reason that we need this many engineered systems is because of the large amount of pavement covering the surface to handle the rainwater runoff.
No, that's not correct. I wouldn't be able to design a conforming stormwater system in a single stormwater management facility. I don't think that would be the best design. But regional basins are a concept that have been around for a long time. So there certainly are ways to do it in a single system. The reason we're doing so many different systems is because we want to control water very close to the source and we want to be able to recharge the water all throughout the site, not just in one corner of the site. So the number is actually providing a superior stormwater treatment than what has historically been done.
Okay, and I understand that. But I also believe if there was less pavement, there would be less need for the number of stormwater systems. Would that be correct?
Of course, there's a relationship between impervious cover and stormwater management basins. But I'll again remind everybody that we're well under or over depending on the standard you're looking at. We're nowhere near the maximum impervious surface, though, on the site.
Okay. I also understand that basins 1 through 7 ultimately flow into Poplar Brook.
I think they all ultimately flow into Poplar Brook.
All of them do, including the Stormsourz on Deal Road that exist. Is that right?
There's a small chunk of watershed, but we're not in the proposed conditions. We're not headed toward Poplar Brook. There's a little minor area that we're just taking that the other way. But other than that, yes, everything will ultimately get to Poplar.
Okay. And downstream, which I know is not in your purview, but I think you were asked to look at this, there are culverts, two of them, I think. And they are undersized, which is part of the reason that Poplar Brook floods.
Where specifically, Mrs. Sharp?
I don't know specifically, but you can find that in an Art and Forest Engineers report, and that's on the website.
Right, so you're saying, okay, but not in Poplar Brook?
No, it's not in the property.
Okay, I didn't know what you were referring to.
But the stormwater runoff from this property does ultimately affect that downstream at some point.
Is there a question?
Yes, because if the stormwater systems do silt up, as I understand they do, not right away, but over a long period of time, this due to improper maintenance, if that situation downstream is not corrected, there will be flooding. Would that be correct from an engineer's point of view?
No, and I'll answer why. As I testified earlier, while we are having bio-retention infiltration systems, we did ignore exfiltration in our routing. So we did assume failure actually in the routing. So we actually meet the state standards in a failure mode. So any recharge infiltration we get would be quote-unquote bonus. Now, that said, I fully expect these systems to work. One of the reasons we're leaning toward bio-retentionism opposed to infiltration basins is because bio-retentions have more natural resiliency if there is poor maintenance. And it's because there's a living ecosystem in the basin. And that living ecosystem tends to break up the soil and will help to compensate for some lack of maintenance. Whereas an infiltration basin is literally just a flat sand bottom. There's no, well, there's still life in it, actually, but there's a lot less life in it. So it's more susceptible to improper maintenance. There's things we can do for those systems too. But bio-retention is definitely superior in terms of resiliency from a lack of maintenance.
Okay, and I know you talked about the maintenance in that bio-retention basin that's in the jug handle. But I don't recall whether you addressed the other basins that are scattered throughout the development in terms of who will be maintaining those?
I did address that, but just to refresh you on that. So there's the two lots that we talked about earlier. So the residential side would be a homeowners' association that would be responsible. And then on the commercial side, it would be the overall landlord that owns the shopping center would be responsible.
Okay, and my understanding from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection is that they do not have enough manpower to monitor that and to ensure that that is being done properly. How can we address that?
The municipality actually has the obligation. There is what's called, I'm going to get into the whole management program, but there's an MS4 permit and the municipality has the obligation to ensure that there's maintenance, like the DEP, do they have manpower to check everything every time? No, but that's where concerned citizens, such yourselves, can play a role. If you see something failing or not acting in the way that it has been for some years, you can simply place a phone call to the engineer's office. And I'm sure, I don't want to speak to them, but I'm sure they'd be happy to look into it and determine if there's a problem.
If it helps, a little bit clarify that.
Okay.
Ultimately, the owner of the property will be responsible for everything. We have an actual contract that is signed between the township and the owner of the property. And that requires them to maintain the basin. It requires them to post funds due to the... Part of it is a specific maintenance plan for all of the basins. Each one will have its own maintenance plan. It's all part of that contract. They're required to post escrow fees and replenish them at the beginning of each year. There's also an escalation clause in there that goes with the cost of living index for the area to make sure that the escrow fees stay current with the world, if you will. The township has the right, but no obligation, to go in, advise owner that there's some standard, that maintenance isn't up. If they don't do it within a certain amount of time, township can go in and do it and charge the owner for it. It's all in the contract. And all that's reviewable in Town Hall.
It's recorded in the county. It's a recorded document against the property. It's required for any basins anywhere in Township.
What happens if by some chance the developer decides to close the business? And they're no longer paying into the system? Who then is responsible?
Well, then the town can act on the property.
I'm sorry, what?
The town can act against the property.
Okay, and what do you mean exactly by act against the property?
Consume.
It can sue.
Well, not only sue, the town could do the work and charge it or levy it against the property. So if as and when the owner ever wants to sell that property, there would be a lien against it, put by the town, similar to what it would do for sewer taxes, that the town would then recover that money. The town is not going to let a basin fail in maintenance from an abandoned site to the detriment of the people around it. There are many protections legally and otherwise put in place to prevent that from happening.
Okay, but let's say there is, and probability of this happening is probably very slim, there's a storm and there is a catastrophic failure of the system. Who pays for all the houses that are damaged when you have been in a flood?
Let's start with the question of, if there's a catastrophic storm, would such a failure create damage to the properties around it?
If by catastrophic storm, you mean a storm event that exceeds the state-required sign parameters, then it would be considered an act of God. So that's not a, to my mind, there's not a liability issue.
But I wasn't asking for your legal opinion. I was asking my answer.
Well, you're right, I told you the answer.
It was a good answer, but I was asking from a catastrophic... a catastrophic storm.
Right.
Would it be possible that our failure would be discernible from any other of the failures in the area?
That would be such a speculative hypothetical. I wouldn't begin with.
But it has happened because we have had storms fairly frequently on us. We've lived here in years that have caused flooding, not only along Poplar Brook, but Deo Lake and all the other lakes along the shore. So I don't think it's that far fetched. I think it's something we do need to think about down the road.
I think that, if I could.
But then I'm stopping.
Well, it's been thought about, okay? The state has actually updated the storms that designers have to use based on some recent, uh, studies by NOAA, National Energy and Atmospheric Administration. Okay, so they've just increased in many places in New Jersey the intensity of the storm, et cetera. Fundamentally, what you have to understand is that the question was asked before, we had a design for the hundred-year storm. Well, yeah, there's an infinite number of hundred-year storms. The one that they designed for is one that's really, really intense. Now, they take the eight-point-nine-inch rainfall, but the great majority of it falls in about five and a half or six hours. It's not spread evenly over 24 hours. So it's a pretty, pretty good design storm, and it's really unlikely that it's going to be exceeding, uh, frequently.
Well, I'm not thinking frequently, I don't think ever.
Your title, your opinion.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharp?
Scott Sharp, Sunset Avenue in La Mesa. And because we had such a pleasant time last time I was with you, I'm already sworn in, so you don't have to go through that. Mr. Lang, let's go to page fifty-four on your charts. Okay, what, what's not clear to me is, and I think you mentioned in the stormwater presentation that, you know, and I think it was just reaffirmed by Mrs. Sharp here, that essentially all of the basins go into Poplar Brook. And is that spread out along Poplar Brook? Or is it at one particular place? And where is that place if it's where everything comes together and goes in at one point into Poplar Brook?
It would really be a little bit of a complicated answer. On the surface, it would really be at three points. Two points that are relatively close together between the...
Can you point to them?
Yes. In the vicinity of the hotel and in the vicinity of the townhomes, there's two different outfalls located here. And then also, we have water that goes into the Deo Road Storm Source System that circles around and comes into the Poplar Brook. Um, so those would be your three surface discharges. But as I've said, this is a green infrastructure design, so a lot of the water, although we ignore it in our routings, but in reality, a lot of the water is going to go down into the ground. Um, that's called infiltration. That water will go then into two subcategories. One will be intra-flow or shallow groundwater flow. Uh, that will likely daylight at some point in time. It'll wait significantly later, often days or weeks, a few months later, into the Poplar Brook. It'll literally come through the soil and create face flow. Uh, other water will then become recharged and actually go down to the aquifer level and recharge the groundwater aquifer.
And I guess in your report is where all the details will be of exactly how much is going into each one of those segments? I haven't been able to obtain a copy of that yet.
That, that's correct. The, the report goes through a series of hydraulic, uh, hydrologic routings and models that, that through a very well-established modeling procedure, figure out how much existing runoff there is, how much proposed there will be, and how that proposed runoff will be handled by the stormwater management system. Um, and then we've been working very closely with Mr. Fitzgerald to, you know, fine-tune that and optimize it, you know, the best we can for this particular developer.
Okay, so is the final version of that stormwater plan? I, I've put in a request to get it, but I hope the township has not replied to my offer request, which is up tomorrow, seven days.
Seven business days.
Okay, five, six, seven, okay? But is that being worked, Mrs.?
Yes.
Okay, we'll meet in seven days, because I'd like to read the report.
Yes.
Okay, good. Uh, let's go to forty-seven. Okay, uh, I, I guess it's just the engineer in me that kind of has trouble with some of these terms of the difference between marketing and facts. And I, I have a little problem here with, and maybe you can under, you can explain this to me. You emphasize that the buffer is fully landscaped, and it doesn't have a burn. The variant, the, the ordinance calls for a burn in these cases. Why don't you just conform to the burn? And what do you mean by fully landscaped?
What I mean by fully landscaped is that we don't have parking or other improvements in that area other than those that are permitted, like a sign, for instance. But in that, as a variance, because we have landscaping around a sign and it crosses into another lawn area requirement. And then we also have the sidewalks that, that cross through that. But those, again, are all permitted uses. So it's fully landscaped. There's no other, uh, uses in that required buffer area. Um, as I pointed out here in the testimony, and actually Mr. Higgins' more recent letter points out, uh, the ordinance is really erroneous in this particular respect. It wasn't meant to provide a solid buffer on Route thirty-five. In fact, that would be bad planning to do that and it would even result in a blight condition in the shopping center. Because these type of uses, retail uses, commercial uses, need visibility from the major highway. Uh, so the, the ordinance intent was not to provide a solid buffer. Now, that said...
That's from the perspective of the applicant, correct?
Okay, let's, Jim?
And I'm trying to ascertain, you, your position was from the applicant's perspective, and it's another perspective whether or not the experts on township have actually represented the people of the township, if that is what they mean.
And again, he was, he wasn't offering his own testimony. He was paraphrasing the township professional's report. We can read right from it if you'd like, so go ahead.
I don't have access to that report, so I guess you could...
I only got it today, this morning. So why don't you read right from that?
So I'm going to refer to Mr. Higgins' March third, uh, two thousand nineteen letter, and then specifically on this top of page four. By way of background, comma, there were extensive discussions, comma, during the process of amending the ordinance to create the current C-seven zoning, comma, with regard to providing a significant landscape buffer along a portion of Deo Road, period. Opposite the existing single-family residences to the immediate south of the site, period. While the ordinance includes language that requires a solid screen along the Route thirty-five frontage, comma, this was apparently included in error and was never the intent, period. It should be noted that there is not a single commercial site along Route thirty-five northbound or southbound that has a solid screen, comma, and no other zone along Route thirty-five requires such a screen, period. The uses in the C-seven zone are also permitted uses, the C-two, comma, C-three, or C-four zones, comma, which do not require a solid buffer along Route thirty-five, period.
So you said something, I guess, just going back to the question I had for you. You pushed the question over to him. And I guess I would request something that the public can get to actually read this rather than me trying to transcribe it on the fly. And also, I think I heard in there that this was a mistake in the township ordinance?
That's what you heard, yes.
Well, you know, that's kind of irrelevant to me. If it's a mistake, then fix the mistake. Go through the change, the process of the township and change the ordinance.
It's something which is recognized.
Fine, but we can't, we can't keep going forward.
I'm in the background, the nation council, they do change it. But for the process before this board right now, it's too late to change it. But it doesn't make sense to totally screen the commercial development from a major highway so that the motors on that highway don't see the development, don't understand what's there.
Okay, the ordinance is the ordinance, so, but that's another discussion.
That's why there are provisions in the municipal land use law that allow applicants to seek variances for specific reasons. And that's what they're doing. And that's where the board makes a decision whether, what they're saying, you know, what their reasons are, are valid.
And so far, I'm telling you, as, based on the responses that I heard from the applicant here, I'm not convinced that that variance is justified.
Well, that's, that's, you're right to have that opinion. The ultimate decision will be made at court.
Right, that's correct. I don't, you know, yeah, let's just make sure it's very factual, what the input is. And can you clarify, uh, Mr. Lang? The third line from the bottom promotes general welfare by promoting economic vitality. What is you mean by general welfare? Of the entire township? Everybody in the township is going to benefit by this?
General welfare is a concept that's enshrined in the municipal land use law, which is the guiding statutes that really establish this entire process. Uh, it's very well understood. There's unbelievable on a case law around it. Uh, but it basically means what it says. So it is the general welfare. And it does apply to the general welfare locally, regionally, et cetera. It, it is in the, in this particular case, when you're talking about whether something's going to be economically successful, I believe that it has impacts at all levels. So obviously locally here in, in, and it is a purpose, by the way, of the municipal land use law. Uh, but locally here in town, if you had a shopping center that was set up for failure, this is not good. You have vacant stores and everything that can go with that. Um, from a regional perspective, it's not good. It's a blight on the tourism of the area to have vacant shopping centers. And a lot of the, the economy, the entire state, frankly, and certainly in this area, is dependent on tourism. Um, and from a state perspective, uh, in terms of whether it's tax revenues or other programs, uh, certainly doesn't make sense to have properties that are not productive. So, uh, we certainly don't want to build a brand-new project that's got an Achilles' heel that we know about in from day one. That, that just makes no sense. Um, so we're pursuing, as Mr. Higgins correctly outlined, we're pursuing the process of the AMUAL variance process to make that case to the board. Uh, and they'll weigh then, um, does that, you know, case have merits? And they'll also weigh, weigh negative criteria, make a determination whether or not that relief is appropriate.
Okay, last question on this chart. The last line, I don't know what that means. Consistent to better than, is that typo? Better the character, or what do you mean by that?
No, it's not meant to be a full sentence. That's meant to be a range. So it's either consistent with or better than the character of the Route thirty-five quarter. I think Mr. Higgins', uh, his paragraph that I have printed to the record includes the same thing, uh, that the character up and down Route thirty-five, you're not seeing a solid screen. In some cases, you're seeing nothing at all. In some of the more modern shopping centers, there is landscaping, but it's not a solid screen. Uh, so it's any, it's a combination. It really depends on the age of the developer.
But solid screening does exist in various developments, correct?
Along Route thirty-five?
I didn't say that. In, in general, you're a land expert. Do you have developments where, where a screen such as that is, is, uh, out there? It, it's not like it's not used. Depends on the town, true?
Solid screens are used, yes, along the frontage of a state highway. That would be extremely rare. It, it can happen, I suppose, if you had a power plant or some junkyard. Um, I can think of, uh, Worcester Creek Nuclear Generator Station. That has pretty much a solid screen along.
But there are developments, so, okay. Uh, let's, since that, let's, let's go to forty-nine.
Well, before you move on to forty-nine, I just have a follow-up question for you. Uh, I believe Mr. Sharp asked if there are developments, not just on the highway, that a solid screen is defined by the ordinance. We have that on Deo Road, do we not?
We have that on Deo Road. We have that internal to the site between the residential and the commercial. There's a requirement for a buffer there. So, so yes, solid screens are regularly employed. It's just, they're not appropriate along Route thirty-five frontage.
Okay, then, then I'll come back to that one more time. Perhaps when you update your video, we can, let's zoom in on that from ground level, looking directly at those barriers of the screen. So we see kind of the magnitude of that screening or not. Because so far, I, I think I see in the two-lane, uh, drive-through, it's, I think you were going to see that it's very visible. Maybe that's the way the developer wants it. But maybe it's just for the, the whole public should understand what the magnitude of that is. Just a suggestion. Forty-nine. Okay, canopy variance. I'm trying to, okay, thirty-eight point two. This is to move the canopies for the, uh, fast-food organization closer to the highway. And that was with your rationale of having more traffic or not traffic, but room for more cars to line up? Is that where you're at?
No. What I said was that the, the whole circulation for the drive-through assembly was moved up closer to the highway. That, the drive-through and the whole circulation pattern is fully conforming. The piece of it that's not is the canopy. So it wasn't that we moved the canopy closer. Uh, we put the drive-through where it's fully permitted and where from a design perspective, it makes the most sense because it allows us to queue the most cars with the least potential adverse impact on either vehicular or pedestrian circulation. So that's why the path is there. Because the path is there, though, that means the canopy, obviously, to be effective, has to be at the same location. Uh, so the canopy proposed over the ordering that, um, stations is then closer by about twelve feet than is permitted under the ordinance. I think on balance, it's, it's absolutely the board's decision to make, on balance, that that is more desirable than it is detrimental. Um, and I've provided a number of reasons for why I think that is true.
Okay, I don't, I don't agree with that, but, uh, that's, that's the board's responsibility to sort that out. Whether you're compliant with the variance or not.
Mr. Chair, an objection, just to place on the record. Mr. Sharp seems to be, um, offering his opinion in response to and in between all of the experts' responses. Certainly, his opinion is welcomed by the board, but that's at the end. I'd ask if you could instruct him to ask his questions, let our witness answer, and then move on to the next question.
Mr. Sharp, just ask the questions, then you can offer your comments at a later date. Thank you.
Page fifty, the island variance. Okay, uh, Mr. Lang. You state on here, this is reducing the size of the islands from, where ten-foot is the requirement, uh, to these smaller sizes. And I guess my question here is one of, is it not true if you kept the ten-foot size that we would indeed have less concrete and asphalt covering the property, which would then, it's the impervious versus pervious surfaces? You want the smaller size, more parking, and therefore you're going to have, uh, you know, less, you're going to have more impervious surface. Is that the result of your design?
No, that's, that's not the result.
Well, then, what is it then? It is less natural surface. It is surface that gets paved.
It's constructing the parking lots more compactly, so there's less pervious surface within the parking lot, but it shrinks the overall size of the parking lot. If I were to make the parking lots fully conforming, they would simply expand outward. Uh, as I've already noted, we have, you know, substantial space to do that. But I want to put the parking as close to the uses as possible.
Unless you were to, is it not true that you could also reduce the number of parking spots? spots?
You could also reduce the number of parking spots, yes.
Correct. Okay. You can imagine, page fifty, your chart 51. Your goal here is to have more parking close to the door. And are, is there some way of understanding how much closer you want to be for your customers? You're trying to get them, how close to the door does this difference make that justifies these, this variance of an additional four foot stalls? How far would they have to walk? Of 20 versus 24 stalls?
It would be an extra couple hundred feet.
Two hundred feet. Will we see that on the drawing, where, where exactly you're talking? And there's no other parking that's close to the area that you're interested in?
So, this is the hotel parking lot on slide 44, just south of the, or, just south of the hotel. That's the main parking field. We've got some more islands here, the next closest area that would be available for the hotel is over here on the northly end of the quick service restaurant parking lot. And that's roughly 200 feet to the north.
Okay, and how many slots are in front of the hotel there, approximately?
Right now, there's 114.
114, and you want another 24 versus 20 in the auxiliary lot? Is that what you're asking for?
No.
Would you explain what you, what you mean, then? Your variance is for 24 versus 20. That's what I'm just trying to understand.
It's consecutive stalls. So, the ordinance allows 20 stalls in a row before you have an island. We're proposing 24 in a row before we have an island. So, to eliminate that, I could break the 24 into, you know, 12 and 11, essentially. And that, that's what we would do. But that, I would lose a stall in each of those two rows, and those two stalls would then be made up for over on the northly end of the quick service restaurant. But they are significantly distant from the door to the hotel. This is a very de minimis, we're talking about two parking stalls here, this is very de minimis.
Correct. It's only two parking stalls. Why are you fighting so much to keep the two stalls? Just, okay. And the, I, I think there's only one left, page 53. Let me see if I actually have a, because I don't want to give you a comment. We'll let you go for this time, without saving this chart. Are you sure you have this on your last day, please?
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anyone else from the public? The young lady on my left?
Ann Foster, 910 Berkeley Avenue. I won't be making any comments, so I'll just get to the question. I had a pretty much about the entrance at Logan Road, and it's not really showcased very well in your video. I was wondering if you could describe it in a little more detail than I've seen.
The traffic engineer is going to describe that whole intersection in a lot more detail, so-
Without the landscaping signage. I thought I heard something about residential sign, I assumed it was that entrance, but...
There, there is a residential sign there. So, this is the residential sign, that's what it would look like, with that orange arrow pointing. This is the driveway, and essentially to the west side of the driveway, that's where the sign is located. Here, this is a full off, so lots of the driveway right here, you can see the sign, and all this, all these little circles around, there are ones here.
So, it's like that shorter sign, is it lit?
It is lit, yes.
And you mentioned before about a multi-purpose path, or the potential of a multi-purpose path?
Correct.
That would be where the existing sidewalk that runs along Logan Beach? Or if, that's pictured running along Logan Beach, is that where you would...
Can you step closer to my microphone?
Oh, sure. Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, would you just repeat that?
Where do you envision the multi-purpose path if one comes by?
When I asked the question, and this is just where I was envisioning it, would be parallel with Deal Road, where we showed the proposed sidewalk. But I think the, the goal was to basically go through with the township's professionals and discuss alternatives.
Okay, so it's just really sort of spitballing your idea there?
It's conceptual, right?
Okay. And in prior renderings, I, maybe I recall incorrectly, but wasn't there, and this might be a traffic question, but wasn't there some kind of a slip road or a road, like an offshoot, that there wasn't a right turn at 35, and it sort of went behind the junk handle?
Yes, and that's what we had indicated, the traffic expert will talk about. In short, the DOT won't let us have it. I'll let him testify in the next meeting.
So, that'll be discussed later?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Follow-up question for Jeremy. The Waterloo Gardens sign, is that internally illuminated, externally illuminated?
It's proposed to be internally illuminated.
Is, is there some way it can be controlled to be shut off? Because I, I, when I worked on the ordinance, I never envisioned it would be an illuminated sign right across the street from the residence.
We'll, we'll speak to the condo owners, and, I'm sorry, the condo developer portion of this, and get back to the next meeting.
See Mr. Cassidy up there?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a few obvious questions on the topic different from-
I can't hear you, sir. We're coming here, I can't hear you.
My wife's never had that problem. So, is the applicant, the owner of this property, or a contract purchaser?
As per the application forms, I would submit it, the contract purchaser.
I thought I was asking witness if the, if the, sir, if you don't know the answer, and you want the attorney to answer the question for you, that's fine. To move this along.
I, I didn't know that Mr. Cassidy was in charge, but this isn't something, the applicant didn't, the, the engineer didn't testify to the applicant. The application forms are on file with the town, and have been on file with the town probably a year now.
These are simple questions, I could be sitting down now, Phil, if you-
And it's not appropriate for this witness.
Try one more question, Mr. Cassidy. Go ahead.
The question I have, well, here's the question. They won't answer it, that's fine. The question is that, if you're, if the applicant is a contract purchaser, what is the, the condition of the purchase? Is it to get the approvals?
I did not testify to that.
You can't answer that question, sir.
You're seeking a subdivision, correct?
Yes.
What is the purpose of seeking the subdivision? What is the advantage of it for the applicant?
I can explain what the purpose of the subdivision is, but as to advantage to the applicant, I offer no such testimony. Purpose of the subdivision is to subdivide the lot into two lots, and to dedicate right away, as I previously testified.
Could you, could you submit this application as is, without getting a subdivision?
It would be a different application, so.
Could you ask, could you ask this, this committee for this plan, approval of this plan, without seeking the subdivision?
Could.
Now, you're, as the planner, you have a, a number of uses here, correct?
Yes.
Hotel, gas station, residences. You indicated that there's a general welfare benefit based on the economics of it. Are, are all of these uses, do you have users or purchasers for these uses?
I did not offer any testimony in that regard.
Your testimony was that the general welfare would be advanced because of the economic advantage of it. So, my question is, for instance, is the gas station already committed? Is the hotel already committed? And I'll ask a question about all the other uses.
You're mischaracterizing my testimony, and I did not offer testimony on that, and I don't know the contract status of any end users.
Now, as a planner, now, all these uses are permitted currently under the existing ordinance, correct?
Yes.
As a planner, just because all of these multiple and many uses are permitted, does it necessarily mean that they should be used in one particular plan?
As a planner, I like mixed-use development, I think they're very, a good planning tool, make a lot of sense.
But that's not my question, or at least it's not the answer to my question. My question is, just because all these many uses are permitted on a particular site, as, intending towards trying to achieve the general welfare or promote the general welfare, just because they're permitted in and of itself does not mean that it's a good plan or will promote the general welfare. Would you agree with that? I'm talking about in general, not talking about this plan.
Nice. In general? Yes.
I'm not going to have any further questions right now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience?
Hi.
Monica.
Hi, Monica Missouri, should be again, I'm already sworn in from the initial meeting. Would you please, sir, show me exactly where the entrances and exits are on both Deal Road and Route 35, just so that it's hard to see? Vehicular, yes, please. With the pointer, I guess, so it would be easier to-
So, starting on Route 35, we have an exit on the northbound Route 35, sides of right out, only, there's no way in, it's just an exit only. Moving further south, there's a right in, right out, so you can make a right turn in off of 35, and a right turn out onto 35. Then, as you move down onto Deal Road, there are two more access points, there's another right in, right out, five ways, the same thing, you can take a right off of Deal Road into the site, or a right back onto Deal Road in the westbound. And then, finally, moving to the east here, southeast, where Logan and Deal intersect, we're going to add another leg to that intersection, and then it'll be a full open intersection. And there is also, off of that, since the radial off of it, there's a connection to the shared parking lot between the museum and the library.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. What percentage of the pavement, or all of the paving, is going to be porous, if you know?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Is it roughly only that portion that you identified that was close to one of the scrub holes, I believe?
I'm not sure you mean by scrub holes, but the porous pavement is located in the residential community, it's over in this, this northwesterly portion of the residential area.
Okay, so it's restricted to just that one area out of the whole development?
That's correct. We're using other BMPs in the remaining portion of the development.
Okay, but they're not porous, or...
We also, actually, my partner's reminding me that we also have the porous concrete apron inside the residential driveway, so that would be throughout the residential community as well.
And, Ms. Krimko, would you please clarify for me, because when you described what the exhibits were, as you were reading Exhibits A through, one through 2932, I missed, A7 was a supplemental something, can you-
I'm sorry, it's the supplemental geotechnical report dated 7/2418, revised to 11/2018.
Okay, and then, A9, as well as A24?
A9 was the project narrative prepared by Basar Consulting, dated 6/2718.
Uh huh. Hold on, please, and then the, um-
I can email you-
A24, okay.
If you want, I can email you others, but- A24 was the engineering response letter by Basar Consulting, dated February 15, 2019.
Okay, thank you. And then, there's reference to, there's reference to this public benefit. Thank you. Is there, is there a tax analysis of any sort that I could look at? Because I was, I was looking through all the exhibits, so-
I shook my head.
Because I noticed on the website that you have for the development, in favor of the development, there's, there are broad statements such as, um-
I have to object, only because the website is not evident to the board, so unless you're going to print it out, hand it in, make it an exhibit, you can't talk about that.
Understood, okay. So, it's my understanding that the, the development anticipates no school expenses, more or less. I mean, there's been no talk about that. I'm a little concerned about actual cost-benefit analysises, analyses in the town.
Just to be clear, the board cannot consider taxes, cost-benefit analysis, or anything like that. It's a permitted use, and if they were to consider that, one way or the other, it would open the decision up to an appeal.
The only time when that's presented is when it's a use variance, where it's not a permitted use. But it's presumed that when the governing body drafts an ordinance and provides for a density and that kind of thing, that that's all taken into consideration. We're not presenting any of that as part of our application.
And there is no place for the public to research where the cost-benefit analysis could be studied with regard to this project?
Certainly, the public is welcome to consult whatever experts they want to, but the applicant is not presenting that information.
And there is nothing that has been presented with regard to cost-benefit analysis of any sort?
Correct.
To the general public? Because I have a hard time understanding why there would be statements such as, it promotes the general welfare. I mean, what, how can you say that?
Promoting the general welfare, as the, the witness offered, is really a legal colloquialism under the municipal land use law. And if I may, read directly from the municipal land use law, you'll understand why it was referenced by this planner, and why it's, it's consistently referenced, and it became more prevalent, meaning it's here than at every single one of them. And the first purpose of the municipal land use law, and it's basically copied in the master plan, and it's zoning ordinance is, and this is 4055B-2A, and it's literally the first thing written after the title. "Encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in this state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety morals, and general welfare."
So, my question is, thank you for that clarification. My question is, what data is looked at? What comparisons are made by the town leaders, the town government, as well as what is accessible for the public to study, to make their decisions, their wise decisions with regard to these matters?
And then, you control this?
The, the subplans are going to be the township's master plan, that's the document that guides zoning.
And that is deemed to be consistent, the, the development that's proposed is deemed to be consistent with that master plan, subject to the decisions of the, the board, correct? The planning board?
I think the answer to that is yes, is a, just trying to question, but yes.
Okay, sorry for the disjointed, but it is a rather late hour. It's difficult for, for any of us to stay awake until 11, several weeks in a row. Has, do other developers get these type of four-hour?
All the time.
Okay. And every week in a row, several times a week, that sort of thing? That schedule is typical?
The sched-, we don't make the schedule, the schedule is the availability of the board members.
Right, but I guess my question really is, if it's appropriate to ask the town, is that a typical schedule? Because it seems to not invite-
Again, at this point in the proceeding, the questions need to be directed to the witness.
Okay, it just seems in contradiction to the general interest of the public, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
The gentleman with the gray hair on this side, not this one, where he is.
It's a good thing it wasn't my father, because he's late, he's still got his gray hair.
By the way, for...
Yes, exactly.
For, based on one of the last comments, it is 10:47, so we will not take any more testimony or comments after how many minutes?
A few, 13 minutes.
I've got three, three questions.
And your title, too.
Steven Kovec, K-O-E-B-C-K-E, Garwood Street. You mentioned before that there was going to be a, a road between the development and the park, so you're going to have a road going behind the library or something like that?
No, it's, it's right up at the front on Deal Road, where Logan and Deal come together. We're going to have a new driveway, make that a four-way intersection. As you come into our site, you'll notice that there'll be a fork. Fork right, you're going to go towards the museum, fork left, you're going into the development.
It's not into the park, it's into their parking lots.
Yeah, parking lots, yes.
Into what parking lot? The library parking lot?
Yes.
Oh, so for the development, to the library parking lot?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, second thing. Yeah, everybody's talking about solid screens and berms and all this other stuff, and yes, you want visibility for the retail market and stuff, so people know where your store's or... Not a comment, but driving from Washington to Boston every week and stuff like that, I've been in plenty of shopping centers that have used evergreen foliage trees and such. It's not a solid screen, it's attractive. You don't see anything, but they're still successful. There is one locally, right in Marlborough, on 9 North, right before 18 intersection. You can't see that shopping center at all, but it must be very successful to still be around. Is there something that, that could have been done?
That's a, that's a question.
That's what I'm saying. Why couldn't we do something like that with...
Is it physically possible to put a solid?
Or would that limit your availability of building properties, setbacks and stuff?
We're horizontally, we're providing the required setbacks, so there's no difference in land area, it's just whether or not there's a berm and a solid screen of landscaping on top of it. In my professional opinion, it would be adverse to a shopping center of this nature to have that kind of screen along 35.
Okay. The other thing, too, this is a moist area, correct? Property?
I'm not sure what you mean by moist area.
Swampy?
No, it's, it's not swampy.
You got the brook going through it, it is a moist ground.
We, we have the, the Brook corridor, Poplar Brook corridor runs along the north edge of the property from west to east, and then there is a finger that comes in, that's a freshwater wetlands feature.
Right.
And it's primarily groundwater fed.
So, the construction, to deal with that compared to a drier element, is going to be more invasive, isn't it, as far as making sure the footings and such are solid?
No, we're not building in any of the, the wetland areas or the repair zone areas. That's part of that eight acres we talked about earlier, that is not being developed or disturbed. As far as the rest of the development, it's very typical of the coastal community. You know, we've done a lot of success, there's two different geotechnical reports that have been submitted, so the soils are fairly well-understood here, and we don't see any abnormal or unusual circumstances.
So you're not going to have to go deeper with footings and such to support this?
No, from a structural standpoint, the soils here are actually very good. They're sandy types of soils, there's some gravel, so no, these, these are normal, it's not organics or clays or silt, stuff like this, where many piles are...
The reason I'm asking the question is I'm worried about the stability of the buildings, you know, as far as future structural fractures and such like that, where, wherever your residents or your retail renters or whatever, they'll have a problem with the building.
He's not testified as a structural engineer, but all of that would be part of the building permanent process, it would have to comply with all of the building's requirements.
All right, well, I know, but he designed it, so I was just wondering if you knew about the, the depth of the footings and such like that, that would be impacting. All right, thank you. Oh, and may I suggest, five-minute limit, people ask me questions?
Well, we, we've discussed that, sir, but we wanted to let everybody have a chance. John, did you have a question? Take the microphone.
Joan Damerin, 1633 Melville Street, O'Kirst. Earlier you had discussed, I have some questions about the Poplar Brook section. It's D-E-S-M-A-R-A-I-S, as in sand. You had indicated there were three places where the basins would then completely empty out into Poplar Brook after going through the process of being filtered and mitigated, I guess you would say. So, at some point during a long Poplar Brook, there's going to be three places where water is going to run off of that property, correct?
There'll actually be two places, the new places, so to speak, where water will run off, and then the third place is actually an existing location that, where the stormwater discharges, but we are connecting to the municipal stormwater system.
And the two new, are they closer to the rear of the childcare center at the end of Melville?
No, they're between the proposed hotel and the residential.
No, I mean, along Poplar Brook, are they between Melville and Holbrook, or are they, where are they, along Poplar Brook, the outfall?
Further east than that.
So, further east than the hotel, behind the hotel?
This is what I testified before, they're right, they're between, they're aligned with the squatting finger.
Go to your first, go to the aerial that shows the overlay on the area.
I'm just trying to get a sense of where the water's going to be coming off the property along Poplar Brook, in relationship to, I guess, the hotel, that's the best way to look at it.
There'll be one, six to the hide off the corner of the hotel, and there'll be another one off the corner of the townhouse.
Okay. Have you observed Poplar Brook before, as project proceeds, in a downpour or a significant rainstorm?
No, not in a down...
Have you observed Poplar Brook in, in a significant amount of rain? Have you gone over there and, to prepare your project, have you observed Poplar Brook in all conditions?
No.
Do you think that that might have been a good idea, considering determining where the outfall pipes would go, that you would pick a spot that might not be already overwhelmed just by regular rainfall before anything's been built?
Part of my expertise is being able to determine where stormwater outfalls should be located. That work can be successfully and correctly done without having to literally be out in a storm event.
Are you familiar with Poplar, Poplar Brook flooding in that section currently?
I understand that there is flooding, or earlier, I don't know if testimony is the right word, but discussion that there are culprits and such downstream that are undersized.
I'm not referring to downstream, I'm referring to at the rear of the proposed Marriott.
At the rear of the proposed Marriott?
Are you aware of current flooding?
Yeah, I'm aware of where the delineated flood hazard area limit is.
And do you find any concern with that, and then adding an additional outfall from runoff from a project of this size?
No.
Okay. My second question would be with regard to the Marriott and the signage. Is there any proposed signage on the Marriott as of now, indicating?
I'm going to defer to the architect for all the building signage.
The building signage would be the architect?
He'll address it, as some of the elevations that were submitted show signage, when he's going to offer, he's going to stipulate that any building signage will fully conform with the ordinance requirement.
My concern was just with it being illuminated.
I, I don't recall off the top of my head, but when we get to his slides, he can offer that testimony.
But it being illuminated or non-illuminated at certain times of night would be the other expert.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go up again, sir. Would you like to get up there? It's 10:56. You've got four minutes. Thank you. Anyone else want to talk to the next guy?
Dennis Howard? Same spelling as before, I hope. I'm looking at the comment, once again, on page 47, made by Mr. Lang, or in his presentation, promoting general welfare by promoting economic vitality. And I ask you, I'm hoping the answer is no, that you don't expect the economic vitality to mean the demise of the six existing gas stations between Sunset and the Speedway?
No.
You're not? That would promote the general welfare if they go out of business?
No, that, that's not the call there.
Thank you, sir. At this point, we're, we're not going to take any more questions, we're going to talk about procedures. So Ms. Krimko, what's your position with regards to the next step in this process?
What I would ask again, like I did at the last meeting, is that the board advise, if there's an available special hearing date that we can carry this to, without the need for further notice, since we need to continue it. I know that Ron has called the board and the high school, so I'd ask the board what available dates are.
We have next Monday at 7:00 to 12:00, this room held for our use, if it's important to choose.
Ms. Krimko, what's your position on notice?
I would request that we adjourn this matter, then, to a second special meeting on March 11th, at, starting at 7:00 PM, at the high school at this location, without the need for further notice.
And the NLUL, isn't there a 48-hour notice provision requirement for special meetings?
No, 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 not, I mean that the applicant wouldn't perform any further notice, the board would certainly have to publish their notice requirement, I just meant the applicant's burden of notice under this hour, I think it's subsection 10.
It is. Well, first of all, could, without making any commitments, how many other people have questions of this witness? All right, so there's a good number, and Ms. Krimko, can you affirm the obvious, which is...
Yes, Mr. Mr. Lang will return on, if the hearing's carried to March 11th, he, he will be here to answer those questions.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I, I'd like to ask, just because of the oddity of the order of which we're doing this, we have not had our professionals' reports that we've reviewed, and I hate to ask this of you, but is there a way that we can make him available maybe at the, at the later end of this, after we've had an opportunity to...
Absolutely, and I spoke to Sandy about this. Normally, he, they would read the reports at the beginning, but because of the length of the reports and the length of the testimony anticipated, I think that it served it better to, to, to present first. So obviously, Bill and Jim, Jeremy will be here until Bill and Jim have no further questions for them.
Thank you.
Ms. Krimko, you know, many people in the audience are not familiar with the distinction between regular meetings and special meetings. I, I think it would be beneficial if you can just outline why, why you've been requesting special meetings and what the rates are and the ordinance and the like.
Certainly. The, the practice, as was pointed out by one of the, the residents at the last meeting, the practice for the planning board is to schedule numerous applications on one night and limit each application to one hour. But as seen, it took us four hours to not even finish the end of the testimony for one witness. So rather than have this extend week, month after month after month, and force the public to come out and sit through hearing after hearing, listening to three or four other matters on the same night, in an effort of expediency and continuity, because it would be very hard to remember what Jeremy testified to after a month, when, you know, it's hard enough just to remember what he testified to last week. So, we requested and the ordinance gives, provides for the board to allow for a special meeting, providing that the applicant pays a $2,500, I think it's a $2,500 application fee per meeting to cover the township's costs for all of this, so there is no out-of-pocket expenditure on the town's behalf. So, again, rather than have this go for months and months, we're trying to expediently have it heard congruently, so everybody can remember the testimony.
So, Mr. Chairman, at this time, it's a call by the board as to whether or not the request by Ms. Krimko should be granted based on the availability and based on the thoughts of the board members about showing up again. Mr. Chairman.
Everybody on the board? Okay, so, can I make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion.
Can I have a motion? To have the meeting next week, next Monday, on March 11th, at 7:00? At the same place. Make a motion, we have a meeting.
Second?
I'll second. Go call them.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Sienna?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Burley?
Yes.
Mr. Burley, I would just say, so you remind the public that the applicant will not be publishing or sending any further notice on this, that this is their only notice.
Yeah, I'll clarify that.
Thanks.
We had the dialogue on this, but to make it clear, under the, I'm, I'll just be using NLUL, we use that interchangeably and often, that's the municipal land use law, that's the statute that we're kind of by. So under that statute, for special meetings, unlike regular meetings, there is not necessarily the need for the applicant to give additional notice, but there is a requirement for the board to do so. So, our administrative staff will be publishing 48 hours in advance of the forthcoming meeting, you know, the details of this. Ms. Krimko, just for the record, somewhat obvious, but when will it be and what time will it start?
I think it was Monday, March 11th, at 7:00 PM in this room.
Okay, very good. Mr. Chairman, at this time, we could have general dialogue or we could have a motion to adjourn?
I would like to ask somebody to make a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second. Go call them.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Mr. Defilia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffey?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Adam.
Mr. Sienna?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Burley?
Yes.